Good morning, everyone. I will now call the meeting to order. For those who are able, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Merci, thank you. As we begin our meeting today and on behalf of Ottawa City Council, I wish to acknowledge that Ottawa is built on unceded Anishnaabe Algonquin territory. The peoples of the Anishnaabe Algonquin Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The city of Ottawa honors the people and land of the Anishnaabe Algonquin Nation and honors all First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. So today represents the end of the budget process for 2023, but it is just the beginning of our work together in this term of council. After the 2023 budget is passed, we'll immediately begin work on the setting of our priorities for this term of council and on the strategic review of city programs and services. Après l'adoption du budget 2023,
After the adoption of the budget 2023, we will start working on putting together the strategies for our mandate. We will dive into the strategic review of the program and services.
Thanking all members of council for your collaboration during this process. Over the past several weeks, you've brought forward several questions and suggestions about the budget. I'm in the middle of thanking you, councillor Menard, so. I'm thanking councillors right now and you're you're not listening. I want you to hear this. So I want to thank all councillors for the work that we've done to resolve issues, bring forward suggestions and improve the budget. Several of the veteran councillors have commented to me that the process has felt very different this year, and I'm gratified to hear that. I think we have clearly demonstrated that we have brought change to City Hall, the change that our residents expected of us. I also want to thank the thousands of residents who reached out to me and members of council and those who participated in community consultations to have their voices heard and their suggestions considered. After listening to ideas and concerns, we've changed to the budget that we will review today. I believe the result of all this hard work is a significantly improved budget for 2023. That's thanks to the hard work of councillors, the engagement of standing committees and the support of staff. When the budget was tabled, I said it was not about numbers but about people and their priorities. I'm pleased that that sentiment has been reflected in our thinking and our work throughout the past month at City Hall. And as a result of that work, there are a number of changes that are directed at making life better for our residents while respecting how the budget impacts the pocketbooks of people facing the current affordability crisis.
Je suis heureux que les changements visent tous. I'm very happy to see that all the changes submitted are trying to improve the life of our resident facing with the actual economic crisis that we're facing.
The financial pressures of our residents by limiting the property tax increase to 2.5% as I committed during last year's election campaign. Ce budget est conforme à l'un de mes principaux.
This budget is following one of my main engagements during my campaign, meaning that the municipal tax will be in between 2 to 2.5%.
Slow for our residents by finding efficiencies and because there has been strong growth this year of 2.2%. Together with the tax increase, that means the city's tax revenues are increasing by 4.7%. This does not mean that every motion put before council today will receive unanimous support, but I believe we all share the same goal of maintaining and creating affordability for our residents and improving city services. I want to thank our interim city manager Wendy Stephenson and acting chief financial officer Cyril Rogers and his team for their tireless efforts in supporting council through the budget process. Alongside the interim city manager and acting chief financial officer, I met personally with every member of council to learn about their priorities and hear their suggestions. These discussions were genuine and productive and thoughtful, and they have resulted in a lot of solutions and motions that will be considered today. Based on feedback heard from across the city, staff worked under council direction to assemble a budget that balances needs across the city while ensuring the city doesn't add to the burden on families with a significant tax increase. This process has been very good, but it hasn't been perfect, particularly because the first budget after an election must be completed on a short timetable. We will have more time for the 2024 budget and we will have an improved process and document that will enhance our decision making. Once the budget is adopted, we will begin the work on the detailed review that will establish our direction and lay the foundation for future decisions and the budgets for 2024 and beyond. Notre travail sur ce budget suit un calendrier serré.
We are following a very tight schedule because of the election last year's. But after that, when we finish this cycle, we will start working on a very detailed 2024 budget and this will be the general direction for 2024 and afterwards.
Strategic planning process in which we will establish our priorities for this term of council, a program review that will examine city services in order to find efficiencies that we can reinvest in our priorities, and a longer and more engaged process to build the 2024 budget. There's no question that this is a tight budget and without the appropriate level of support from our provincial and federal governments, we will have significant pressures on our finances next year and beyond, particularly in areas like transit and infrastructure. I want to reiterate my commitment to working with other levels of government to address the pressures we're facing today and that we will face in the future. This will be a primary focus of my work moving into the 2024 budget process. I'm looking forward to the discussions today and I hope that you will support this budget. I believe it is both fiscally responsible and compassionate. I believe it is balanced and affordable. I believe it respects our residents and reflects our priorities. I also believe it proves that all of us can work together collaboratively, productively and effectively to build a better city for everyone. Thank you all again, and I'll now ask the deputy clerk to do the roll call.
Councillor Lulov. Councillor Dudas.
Merci.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tuney.
Present.
Councilleur Plant.
Merci.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Trossard.
Here.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor DeRus.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor DeRush.
Here.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Lowe.
Here.
Mayor Setcliffe.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's move to declarations of interest. I know there are a few related to the budget. Councillor Currie.
I, councillor Cathy Currie, declare a potential indirect pecuniary interest on the following portions of the 2023 draft operating and capital budget as I am on the board of directors for the Children's Hospital of Eastern Ontario, CHIO, an organisation whose programs would receive funding from or would potentially receive funding from these budget line items. Number one, Ottawa Public Health, Ministry of Health Programs and Standards, costs shared core programs, page four of the OPH budget book. Number two, Community and Social Services, Children's Services, Operating Resource Requirement, page nine of the CSC budget book, as follows. A, special needs resourcing under legislative programs, and B, special needs resourcing under municipal investments. And number three, complexes, aquatics and specialized services, operating resource requirement, page 31 of the CSC budget book.
Thank you, councillor Currie. Councillor King.
Thank you, your worship. In accordance with sections five and six of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, councillor Rawson King, declare a potential indirect pecuniary interest on the following portion of the 2023 draft operating and capital budget as I am on the board of the Rito Winter Trail of Ottawa, an organisation which via the Winter Trail Alliance would receive funding from or would potentially receive funding from this budget line item. Recreation, cultural and facility services, community recreation, culture and sports programs, community recreation and cultural programs, page 25 of the CSC budget book. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor Gower.
I, councillor Glenn Gower, declare potential deemed indirect pecuniary interests on any city funding that may be applied to the National Capital Commission, including through the following budget line items, as my partner is employed by the NCC. Public Works Department Operating Resource Requirement is follows. Snow and Ice Agreements Transportation Committee, page five, within road services revenues. Spring Cleaning Transportation Committee, page two, within business technical support services revenues. Traffic Signals Transportation Committee, page five, within traffic services revenues. Solid Waste Environmental and Climate Change Committee, tax-supported, page eight, within solid waste services revenues and Capital Project 910436 and the rate-supported capital budget, Integrated Water and Wastewater being Riverside Drive Sewers, page 71.
Thank you, councillor Gower. Councillor Lulov.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Matthew Love, declare a potential deemed pecuniary interest on the following portions of the 2023 Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee Draft Operating Budget. Emergency and Protective Services Fire Services Operating Resource Requirement Communications, page six of the EPPS budget book. As my beautiful, intelligent and patient spouse is employed by Versiterr, it's not funny, it's true. Is employed by Versiterr Public Safety, a software firm that provides services to Ottawa Fire Services and would receive funding from or would potentially receive funding from these budget line items.
Thank you, councillor Lulov. And I understand councillor Brown, you have a point of privilege?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I rise on a point of personal privilege to advise council in advance of consideration of the Ottawa Police Services Board budget at today's meeting to acknowledge that my sister and brother-in-law are employed by the Ottawa Police Service. I have consulted with the Integrity Commissioner and confirmed that I do not have a pecuniary conflict of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, but wish to declare the relationship to provide transparency on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Are there any other declarations of interest? Okay, let's move to, there are no regrets as I understand it, so let's move to item six, motion to introduce reports. Councillor Dudas.
Be it resolved that the following reports be received and considered. One, the report from the Finance and Corporate Services Department titled 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. Two, the report from the Committee of Adjustment titled Committee of Adjustment 2023 Draft Operating Budget. Three, the report from Crime Prevention Ottawa titled 2023 Draft Operating Budget, Crime Prevention Ottawa. Four, the report from the Ottawa Public Library Board titled Ottawa Public Library Board 2023 Draft Budget Estimates. Five, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 1. Six, Audit Committee Report 1A. Seven, Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee Report 1A. Eight, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report 1. Nine, Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report 1A. Ten, Planning and Housing Committee Report 3. Eleven, Transit Commission Report 2. Twelve, Transportation Committee Report 2. And be it further resolved that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the following budget reports arising from the meetings that took place on February 27th and 28th, 2023, following publication of the draft council agenda. A, the report from the Ottawa Police Services Board titled Ottawa Police Services Board 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. B, the report from the Ottawa Board of Health titled 2023 Draft Operating Budget for the Ottawa Board of Health. And C, Community Services Committee Report 1.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. That motion is seconded by councillor DeRus. Is the motion carried? All right, we will now receive a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole. Councillor Dudas.
That city council resolved to move into committee of the whole pursuant to sections 52 and 53 of the procedure bylaw.
Seconded by councillor DeRus. Is the motion carried?
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. So we are now on to the roadmap motion for consideration of the 2023 budgets and I'll ask councillor Dudas to read the introduction of that motion, please. Councillor Dudas. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to stop disrupting the meeting, please. Would you, would you please stop the disruption and? Okay. I'm, I'm advising you that you are being expelled from the council chamber, so would you please leave the council chamber? Okay? All right, we will recess, we will recess the meeting until the disruption is over.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be it resolved that city councils sitting as committee of the whole receive and consider the draft 2023 operating and capital budgets as recommended by the Committee of Adjustment, Crime Prevention Ottawa, the Ottawa Police Services Board, the Ottawa Public Library Board, the Ottawa Board of Health and by the standing committees and Transit Commission. And the draft 2023 rate-supported operating and capital budget as recommended by the Environment and Climate Change Committee as listed in the council agenda incorporating all amended budget books and pages. And be it further resolved that councils sitting as committee of the whole approve the following budgets.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. So let's move through the, through part one, which is the board budgets, beginning with the 2023 draft operating budget for the Committee of Adjustment. Any questions? All right, is, is this carried? Number two, the 2023 draft operating budget for Crime Prevention Ottawa. Any questions? Is it carried? Thank you. Number three, the 2023 Ottawa Police Service Draft Operating and Capital Budgets is tabled on February 1st and is recommended by the Ottawa Police Services Board. Questions? Councillor Menard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We're on the, the police budget at this point, the operating capital? Okay, thank you for that. I just, I do want to make a couple of comments. I'm going to be dissenting on this, this item. I'm deciding on a couple of items today, this one and, and a piece on, on transit. Obviously, it's been a tight year for everybody at the, in the municipality, including OPSB, who's impacted by the less than inflationary increases for 2023. But I think it's precisely these types of circumstances that we need to really dig deep on where we allocate funding. And so for me, I've talked a lot about mental health response teams. I know we want to advance that this year, but a $15.2 million increase to a budget where we have difficulty finding money for things like pools, things like affordable housing. I know there's going to be some increases coming later today, but these increases to a budget of $401 million annually to me are exorbitant. And I, I go back to how much the police budget has increased since 2001. And in 2001, the gross operational budget was 128 million. And in this year, it's 401 million, so more than a tripling in nominal terms and a doubling in real dollar terms. And so I think the OPSB can, can better absorb a real dollar shortfall than other budgets in our city. And we're not just hiring those 25 new officers. Obviously, there's a lot of attrition being hired back here, too. I believe in about 70 other officers, if I understood correctly from my meetings with the Police Services Board. We are allocating $40 million to a single police station in, in the budget, but less than half of that for affordable housing across the city on the capital, you know, returns. The affordable housing capital budget really shouldn't bear the brunt of the real dollar shortfalls that we've got in inflation. And so housing people, putting downward pressure on our Ottawa rental market prices, that can help us address a lot of the root causes of crime that we're not going to see through, through that, through that policing lens. I think we need to reduce the stressors and anxiety in people's lives that lead to social dysfunction and more trauma-prone environments through social investment and doing this will, will do more to prevent crime than a larger police budget will. So yeah, I'm going to dissent on, on this item. I, I'd like to see the police start to recognize that their work will be reduced with a mental health response team. I, I didn't appreciate the response from the chief at the time that, you know, we don't, we oppose transferring money from the police services budget towards mental health response teams, but we know that will reduce their workload. We've seen it work in Toronto. We saw that work in Toronto. That, that pilot that came back was exemplary. And we're seeing it across the country and across North America. We can shift some of those very expensive police response resources to other methods that work better, are cheaper and have better outcomes for people. And I don't think we've been fast enough to do that. And so for that reason, Mayor, I'll, I'll be dissenting on this budget.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question around the efficiencies that you found in this year's budget. And I know the previous board had set a fairly high efficiency target that, that was not met. So I'm just wondering why the efficiencies found in this year's budget are not being put towards that target but being reinvested in the service.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. So yeah, the last year's in 2022, there was a very aggressive efficiency target set of $7.1 million. We have achieved the vast majority of that with about $1.5 million remaining that will carry over to this budget year. We've set $500,000 for this year and have looked to achieve that through finding efficiencies in some of, in some of our professional services areas. It is more of a modest efficiency target that was set this year, but it is on the backs of the last decade, us as a police service having, having achieved $27 million in efficiencies. So although we did not achieve an aggressive target, sorry, set an aggressive target this year, we have achieved it and we are looking at ways in this budget year to find more efficiencies within our service areas in years to come.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. I guess the question though was why the efficiencies from this year were not, were reinvested as opposed to being put towards that target? So did you not feel that you could put that towards the, the target that was set in the previous year?
I'm going to apologize, but there was clicking in my ear just as the important part of the question came through. So can you ask it again?
So the question was, you, you had found some efficiencies in this year's budget and instead of putting it towards the efficiency target that was set in the previous year, you reinvested it in the service. And I'm just wondering why you felt that you needed to reinvest those dollars as opposed to put it towards the efficiency targets from the previous year?
Well, we believe we've, well, we know we've found other solutions to make up for previous, the previous year's shortfall. So in finding the 1.5 million that existed still and the 500,000, we identified that we could reinvest those $500,000 into, back into the organisation to, to provide improved services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradley. Councillor Trossard.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I will also be dissenting on this item for many of the same reasons that councillor Menard articulated. I like to say what we fund tells us who we are. And those of us who have been fighting desperately to get an increase in our capital spend for affordable housing, and I am happy to say there's motions coming forward today that will make some movement in that direction. It is felt like fighting for scraps. The original spend in the budget that was presented to us on February 1st for affordable housing is only $15 million. And that, that is simply the cost of the increase to the police budget, which doesn't seem to ever have a ceiling. And also, while I do have to say I'm very encouraged by, it seems that most of the councillors around this table support an alternative mental health response. That involves moving resources out of policing and into the community. If we want alternatives, it needs to come with dollars. And in this budget, it doesn't. So, and the last thing I want to say is that I knocked on thousands of doors during the campaign and residents of Somerset Ward are still feeling the collective trauma of being abandoned when the convoy came to Ottawa. Seeing extremism on their streets, violence, harassment, particularly against racialized individuals, people with disabilities, the Jewish community, 2S LGBTQ community. And I'm just not willing to reward the level of abandonment that we experienced with more money until I am confident that our emergency services will never become overwhelmed again and that we will never be abandoned in that way again. So I will say I have been encouraged with some of the recent attempts with the convoy to return and the level of communication from police and emergency services has certainly been much better. But I don't think we're there yet. And I don't think the faith in my community is particularly high in the Ottawa Police Service right now. And we have a lot of work to do. So thank you very much. I will also be dissenting.
Thank you, councillor Trossard. Councillor Devine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Chief Stubbs, and thank you, DC Chief Bell for being here. I, I will also be dissenting on the police budget, but not at all because I don't believe that the OPS provides an essential service. I actually do believe that the OPS provides an essential service. The concern I have for me, the questions I have is whether or not everything that the OPS is currently doing is appropriate work for the OPS. And I think that the OPS themselves recognise that more work can and should be done by other forces. I had been hoping that Police Services Board, as last year would have directed some resources away, that did not happen this year. I'd been hoping for it. It was interesting to note in the, and I was so appreciative that the OPS did a consultation, did a, a poll, which was a, a solid poll. And it was interesting to note that it seemed like 50% in of the surveys were looking for more policing and 50% were not. And that enough, that lack of clarity of, of a public desire for greater investment is enough for me to sense that perhaps the level of investment that is being placed is, is not necessarily warranted. I had a fantastic meeting with DC Bell and with my community service officer, Sergeant John Drater, in which you clarified for me that in Ward 9, because I served both Ward 9 and I served the city, and I'll get to the city in a second, but that in Ward 9, crime is on, is on the descent. And that DC Bell, you know, you were, you were very clear to me in that you said that by and large, across the city, among many wards, one of the common, if not the most common concern was about speeding and road safety. And you, and you admitted in our meeting that policing is not the solution to that. And so I do look, as I try to advance public safety in my ward and public safety across the city, the police is not always the solution to that. And so I am looking to see if I can find other ways, perhaps in the 2024 budget, to do that. And just finally, I mean, we all know that we are in a tight budget year. And in a tight budget year, as you know, many of my colleagues say, we need to make difficult decisions. And in a tight budget year, as you know, many of my colleagues say, we need to make difficult decisions. And whereas I can understand the, uh, the long-term need of a policing station in, in Barhaven is, uh, in the need, there's such a significant capital investment in this budget for that police station right now, that at a time when we're making such tough decisions on other things that are admittedly, across the city, an emergency, it doesn't feel like, uh, the emergency being stated in the police budget rises to the same level of urgency of our other needs. And so for that reason, uh, while I, uh, I support what the OPS does, I just can't support the, uh, the increases in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Devine. Counselor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Chief and Deputy for being here this morning. I, I want to follow up on one issue that I've raised. I'm over here. Um, Chief, and, um, that is, uh, an issue I raised last year, and when I, uh, spoke at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting recently, raised again. And I want to get a better understanding of how resources will be, uh, perhaps realigned this year. And that's regarding, um, how neighborhood police officers, um, engage communities that they're assigned to. I've talked about the neighborhood response teams, and I've talked about the role of community police officers. Both units I support strongly. Um, what I've raised, though, for the past year and change has been what I think is, uh, opportunities for better cohesion and, and collaboration between NRTs that are assigned to specific neighborhoods and the community, the role of the community police officers. And I've talked about how priorities of these units are determined. Basically, they are assigned to serve particular neighborhoods. And there's a growing appetite for communities to be better engaged and consulted on what those needs are. This really is a partnership, right? This was unraveled or un- unveiled by the police as a partnership in communities where all parties need to work together for the betterment of communities. And since I've raised this a number of times, I just want to give the chief an opportunity to talk about his vision for the NRTs, whether resources will be realigned to reflect the concerns that I've been bringing to the police's attention. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Chief Stubbs, did you want to respond to that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Brockington. Uh, you know, everything you said there, I agree with in terms of, uh, working together, collaboration, cohesion, and ensuring that those neighborhood response team members and the CPOs are catering, if you will, and focusing on, uh, the specific issues that the community feels are important in those, in those individual neighborhoods. And there's no doubt that all our NRT, um, teams should have separate priorities. There'll be crossover, I'm sure, in some, but, uh, it should be, um, specific to those neighborhoods. And, and that really is the vision, isn't it? It's, it's about, um, engaging at a hot, uh, uh, in a, in an in-depth level of what they should be doing. Where should they be spending their time and what they should be doing? What level of enforcement? What level of community engagement? What level of diversion? All of those programs that we run, um, can be catered to those particular, to those particular neighborhoods. Uh, Superintendent, uh, Bryden is in charge of the Neighborhood Resource Team, and I know in twenty-twenty-three, they are um, examining how they operate and what, uh, changes they can make to ensure that that occurs. And then not only that, the priorities are unique or different in every, uh, neighborhood, but then obviously, um, who's responsible for that? And it could be police, could be a combination of police and resources in the community, and of course, what's the expected outcome? What's the measurables that we can say that we've, uh, been successful or we haven't in, in that particular priority? So that's something I certainly want to move to and make sure, uh, that, that we have that in place. Um, there is, of course, uh, I know the, uh, Superintendent Bryden, uh, advocates greatly for, for those teams. The value is immeasurable. They often do get, uh, detracted or, uh, from their substantive duties when they have to work, um, you know, protests or major events that come in, and that focus isn't a hundred percent. And that's where I really need, I, I want them to be a hundred percent focused on their particular neighborhoods, and that's just not reality. Uh, they end up getting diverted. So that's something that we have to try to avoid as much as we can. So I'm looking forward to, uh, working with Superintendent Bryden and, uh, and his team as they, you know, get into those different, uh, neighborhoods. And, uh, certainly, I, I want to specifically attend a couple of those myself, so I can hear the conversation and hear how those priorities are being developed. Uh, just so I hear it for myself as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, Chief, for that. I appreciate that and, um, look forward to, uh, greater opportunities this year with, uh, the OPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I can't support this budget this year, um, because I haven't seen anything that is concrete in terms of mental health supports, and, um, I think that was incredibly important. When I look at the concerns in my own ward and across the city, many of the calls are related to, um, social service, um, concerns such as, um, you know, problems with people breaking into cars, et cetera, looking for petty change, things like that. But the bigger calls on mental health, um, concerns, uh, people still feel that they don't have, that they don't really want to call the police. They know that this is something else. And I want to know, um, if you're going to be looking at the twenty-twenty-four budget to, um, to fix, uh, to fix this and to look at other jurisdictions, um, as such has been named in Toronto, because I do believe that's what people want. We, we've had cases of, 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 uh, persons that are, obviously have, um, issues. And we know that they're not necessarily dangerous, yet they still, they need mental health supports. They need a specialist to help them in, uh, when, when there's an emergency call. And, um, it, it's not just happening downtown. It's happening all over. So I want to know if that is what is being looked at solidly for twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, certainly, I, I'll just, um, comment on one point is that we are actively, um, as we speak and go in throughout twenty-twenty-three, we are heavily invested in mental health calls and trying to find alternatives. And I have said it in the past, I believe on February first, I support, um, if you will, the Toronto model or, uh, an, um, an opportunity to work with community agencies and City Hall and ministries to look for alternatives. And if I, if it's not clear, um, or if the message is unclear from me, um, I, I don't know how I can say that more clearly. I do support it one hundred percent. We have to get there, though. And we are getting there, and I'm pleased to see the progress that has been made. See, in the last month, significant progress has been made. Um, uh, Ms. Donna Gray is, uh, beside me here, and she, uh, is leading a team that is working towards a pilot that is similar, uh, to a Toronto model. And I, I might even defer to Ms. Gray if she wants to talk more about that. But we are participating in that group and, and we are investing, uh, you know, I will say, we are paying, there has been money, uh, taken, um, deferred from our budget to this, um, to the topic of mental health from previous, uh, city councils. Um, over two-million dollars is actively in the community. Um, and agencies are working, uh, to provide that service, their individual service. We are, in fact, as well, looking on a call-deferral program ourselves, uh, within our own dispatch. We are also looking to, um, hire and put full-time, uh, a mental health support worker into our dispatch center where they can call, or, I'm sorry, speak directly to people that are in crisis and try to de-escalate them, or defer them right away, or wait until police does, do get there. So we are actively involved in this topic at many levels. But in terms of the future, um, I, I might defer, uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, um, to Ms. Gray, or maybe when it's her turn to talk. I'm not sure of the protocol there.
Sure. I think that's a good idea. There, I know that Donna Gray spoke yesterday at the, uh, Community and Social Services meeting, and it, and there have been a number of questions from councillors about the prospect of, uh, accelerating the implementation of a, uh, of a pilot project around, uh, mental health response. So if you wouldn't mind, Donna, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I'd like to take a moment just to thank Chief Stubbs for his active participation as a member of our, uh, Community Safety and Well-being Advisory Committee. I know in his early days, he's made that a priority to participate and to start to guide the work of the guiding council and the work that the team's doing. And really excited to be advancing the work and where we've gotten today in terms of an alternate response. And I think at committee, what you heard yesterday was escalating what we could do in twenty-twenty-three, um, with the investments that we have and with what we think is the first, most important stage of moving to an alternate response. And so the first piece that Chief Stubbs spoke about just right now is about training, uh, dispatch officers, putting mental health supports into the call center as the first nine-one-one, starting to understand and build the correct algorithms that we can start to divert the calls and understand the types of calls that need to go with police support. And what we're doing now is building with our EMS and nine-one-one partners and with police a fourth option. So, you know, pick one, two, three, police fire paramedic, fourth, would be mental health. And we're figuring out how to divert that call to mental health, going to existing and expanding to citywide, the EMS health response, which is a non-uniformed mental health practitioner with an EMS to do those calls. In twenty-twenty-three, what we're gonna attach to that and what the guiding council found is, not only in those instances, we've moved it to health, but it's very important to connect it to social services. So in budget twenty-twenty-three, you'll see enhancements as well for a peer support component to support that intervention, to continue that person to the alternate care. At the same time, we're working with the chief and the guiding council and members of the guiding council and the community to build an alternate line directly to a direct mental health response. So something like a two-on-one or a distress center and then a non-uniformed response. That work is work that you're gonna see in Q2. And in Q2 twenty-twenty-three, you'll really see the full package of investment that will help you understand where those investments will go, so that we have a correct mental health response. And that is work that we are doing, uh, very much in partnership as Community Safety and Well-being Advisory, which also has, um, public health around that table, the school boards and, uh, and another, a number of community organizations. And then at the very grassroots team, the guiding council, which has all mental health practitioners in the city building that response.
Thank you for your response. My concern is that it's, uh, it's not, uh, we're not making this a priority in the budget right now. And I, I hope to see it, um, further in, uh, twenty-four, twenty-four. But I appreciate the work that we're doing to get towards that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Uh, Counselor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be helpful for, uh, our police service to hear at least a voice of compliment. And I am very proud to have two members of my family who are members of the Ottawa Police Service. I think the Ottawa Police Service does an excellent job under very tough conditions, providing service to our communities. I think that the unhelpful rhetoric around robbing Peter to pay Paul in terms of providing additional funding to social services at the cost to the Ottawa Police Service is unhelpful. I think we can do both. I think there are opportunities in other areas of spending in our city that we can look at reducing in order to, uh, provide funding to social services. Because at the end of the day, we want to help residents in our city. But I did want to get on record, Mr. Mayor, saying that I'm pleased to support the budget that's come forward. I think the work that, uh, our officers do is tremendous. They're assets to our community. And certainly, the Ottawa Police Services Board members do a great job in their role. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I would say if there are members of our council that wish to see fewer police resources in their communities, Ward Twenty-One stands ready to accept an increased level of policing services in the ward. And I just wanted to make sure that we're on the top of that list if there's any redeployment that's going to happen. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Lowe?
Thank you, and I, uh, I have very similar sentiments as Counselor Brown, because a lot of the doors I knocked during the campaign had a lot of concerns that would require an actual police response. But, uh, my question for, for, uh, I guess the chief or, or the deputy chief is, uh, just around the south, uh, the new south police station, like what does it represent? It's not just a new police station. Like what does it represent? What, uh, what services it'll bring to, to the southern communities and where any achieved savings may go afterwards?
I'll let Deputy Bell, uh, answer a little bit of that question, but, you know, I think, uh, what it represents, uh, primarily, obviously, it's been an issue that has been talked about, uh, amongst the police board and the OPS for well over a decade. And, um, we, we're finally at a point where we want to move and, um, um, and execute the plan that has been developed. But I think it's a strong message, uh, as well to, uh, the southern part of Ottawa that has grown in population, um, uh, a significant amount, and we do need a presence in that area. Uh, the buildings that service the southern part of, um, of Ottawa, you know, the Green Bank, the Littrem are very old. Um, they're not, uh, they're not workable for us anymore in terms of renovations and whatnot. So that, that presence, I think, is very important, um, for, for the community and for our membership to ensure that they're in a location where they can respond to the community's needs, um, in a timely manner. We will pass over to, uh, to Deputy Bell for, for more comments.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, so as the chief indicated, I think the, the first and foremost, um, opportunity that it gives the city in terms of policing is, is geographical location where police officers can deploy from. That in itself means that they are more readily available for calls for service within the area, uh, that they're responsible for. Uh, right now, our, our stations are positioned to the west, central at Littrem, but in more northerly area. Uh, South Division will allow us to position ourselves so that we have that south area of the city better, um, better geographically covered for deployment, um, as well as meet the needs of the growth that is anticipated in our city around that area. Um, beyond that, it will be a fully functional police station that will have, uh, the deployment options from it, but it will also have front desk services. It will have the ability for people to, uh, report crimes and/or report collisions in the area. Uh, it will house much of our specialty units, uh, because it, it will take some of the pressure off of our other buildings because, um, of the large, large parcel of land that we have. Uh, we're also looking for opportunities and have had several discussions over the past, uh, number of months, right up into this morning, around looking for opportunities to partner with other city service providers, uh, to utilize some of the space within the building that's being constructed, as well as, uh, future potential partnerships in the parcel of land that exists, uh, at South Division.
And, uh, i-if in the end, that building ends up achieving savings, like operational savings from retiring two old buildings, I think ending the leases of two other buildings, where would that money, uh, ultimately go?
So as part of our facility strategic plan, we've, uh, forecasted out our, uh, facilities' needs for the next fifteen years. Um, South Division will, if it's approved and built, uh, will, uh, come online in twenty-twenty-six. Twenty-twenty-six, Littrem will come offline for us, and twenty-twenty-seven, Green Bank will come offline for us. Um, as part of the facility strategic plan, we've also identified several other projects, including our communication center and a downtown, uh, patrol facility that have been rolled into that building. So there are savings that have been identified, but we've used those savings to offset, uh, capital costs, some of the debt financing that we require through the city to make sure that, um, we have, uh, a strategic vision on where we need to have our capital investments per facilities over the next fifteen years.
And perhaps the, the way to, to just frame that in terms of the, the money savings is the, uh, we, we will take on, the city will take on debt to finance the south facility, and then they will, in effect, charge the OPS money to pay for that debt. Uh, so that debt, that, that payment that we will then pay the city back will, will be the savings from not having to, uh, lease and fix and finance those older buildings.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Hubley?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess I'll be the first, uh, around the table. Uh, I want to say, uh, to the, not just to the chief and the deputy chief, but to all the men and women of the Ottawa Police Service, thank you for what you do for our community, for your service, uh, the long hours and the effort that's put in. I, I want to make sure that the, especially the frontline officers know that, uh, uh, they are supported. And, uh, so I appreciate your efforts here. I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I hear the concerns of some of my colleagues about the, uh, mental health calls. I share those concerns. I actually do believe we need to do something about it. I just, I prefer the Donna Gray option, uh, instead of funding it from the police. I think we have to find the funding and work with our partners to make sure that, uh, uh, proper mental health response is available, that the, uh, police can use. Or maybe the police don't even have to be involved in a lot of those calls. So, uh, I look forward to hearing more about what, uh, Ms. Gray was talking about. Ms. Gray was talking about. And I'd be very supportive of it. But for today, I'd like to ask for yays and nays on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Hubley. Just a quick follow up on that, Donna, if you don't mind. At one point, I remember somebody raising the fact that there are other sources of potential funding for pilot projects and that sort of thing. Is that not, is that not the case with regard to potentially going to the provincial government for some support on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. And yes, and I think that's what we want to make sure when we bring the report back, that we clearly identify, because it is a complex mix of service providers in this response. And we really want to make sure that what council is investing in is prudent, and we're actually going to the other funding sources that have responsibility to fund that, other ministries or other funding sources like the Solicitor General. We would do that in partnership with police, do those applications or those applications to other funding sources. So we're hoping to really do an advocacy campaign as well before we reach the 2024 budget.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, Councillor Hill, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much to the staff, Donna, and also to you, chief, for the work you've been doing in terms of transition to, you know, the perspective of more holistic and mental health oriented model. I heard you loud and clear in your embrace of that, that way forward. And I think, you know, as somebody who, you know, myself, I've been through an institution that went through some serious transformative change in terms of how they do service delivery on something as complex as this. I applaud the initiative, and I respect the fact that it's a very complex issue. My concern is one of risk exposure to the city in the diversion to mental health calls and our service model and how we're going to deal with that. What's the risk that the city is going to be exposed to from the perspective of, you know, sending a mental health professional or a team that are not perhaps security oriented into a scenario where they could perhaps find themselves in a vulnerable situation? And so are we, are we dealing with that from a liability or an insurance perspective? And what does that model look like from a budget 23 perspective?
Thank you, Councillor Hill. Mr. Mayor, I'll let the liability risk side perhaps with Ms. Gray. I will say that there is risk. Every call will be triaged, and that risk assessment needs to occur in regards to the circumstances that are being presented by the person in crisis. And obviously, you know, through our dispatch center as well, we can run some history. Is there any history of violence with that person, et cetera? What are they saying today? And then making that assessment that we can send non-police resources there. And if there is some risk, then there's always an opportunity to have police nearby, around the corner, if you will, down the hall, to help if need be. Ideally, they're not there, but that certainly those three models of no police, police attending to assist if needed. And then there are those calls where we will have to go based on, and maybe be the only ones that go based on the risk level that is associated. So in terms of the actual risk and liability, perhaps to my colleagues to the right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's an excellent question, councillor. You know, from a paramedic perspective, we're heavily involved in this program. And I can tell you that when you're trying to divert calls, there's algorithms that need to be developed. Toronto's already gone through some of this, so we'll learn from their experience. But, you know, hopefully we'll reduce the risk by making sure we're going to the right calls. And anything with violence or threats of violence would obviously include our police partners in the response. So risk is what we do from a response perspective, and we always analyze that. And I think that where we're at right now is doing that research and making sure that we have the right algorithms to dispatch the right resources to the right calls.
And, Mr. Mayor, just if I could add around the second part of that question around the investments that we have this year, those are included in the money that we have in the budget to do that work collectively as a team in 2023 to figure that out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And that gives me confidence I'll be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. Councillor Currie?
Thank you. Just a few comments. Really, thank you all for such important comments and questions and thinking on this, because I guess the theme, I guess I would want to convey is stay tuned, is the general theme. There's lots of work to be done, obviously, to ensure that we have the right response. And over the next year, I really encourage all councillors to watch what we talk about at our Police Services Board meetings, because these will be the very topics. What the alternate response looks like, what our strategic planning will be for the year and maybe multi-year, what performance indicators we'll put forward in terms of a dashboard that will be easily readable for people and understandable, that the open data project where people will be able to look at our data as a city in terms of police responses, non-police responses, crimes committed, the change in that crime level, all of that is to come, and what the Police Services Board will be focused on. You know, their conversations will include special constables, will we use special constables instead of police? Will we use the Ottawa Community Housing Model where there are security officers instead of having a police response? All of these things will be what we'll be looking at. I guess the topic I heard a lot about was at the doors and even at this meeting here right now is neighborhood resource teams. And I guess I would say to my council colleagues that the reality is those things cost money too, you know, to make sure that there are resource teams and staffed adequately for all of the outlying neighborhoods. You see the increase in crime in the rural areas. I had an email today about a Canada store, more than one Canada store, that now is only admitting one person at a time because they're worried about crime and who comes in the door that they can't control. So when those types of things happen, you think a neighborhood resource team would be very helpful there, but they're maybe not staffed adequately to be able to respond because they're in other areas. I would note as well, the increased response required for so many of the protests that are occurring and will continue to occur. And all of those things cost money. New facilities so that neighborhood resource teams can be deployed more easily cost money. And so I always steal from the mayor's message about either or thinking. It's not either or, it's both. And how do we make that happen? Because I think we all know what we want to see and maybe aren't quite sure right now about what that will cost. But I think you've heard from many people here today how important this entire issue is to everyone, police, police services board, city staff. And the other comment I will make is the Toronto model that we'll be looking at very carefully was funded by Toronto City Council. It didn't come from the Police Services Board budget. And that's a really important thing to note. It's the concept of it having to come from police services budget instead of coming from council, I think that we need to put more thought into for the budget 2024. So anyway, I really appreciate the comments. And as I said at the beginning, stay tuned and please pay attention to what's happening at Police Services Board, because I think we are all thinking the same thing and may go about it slightly different ways and with different timing. But it is important work. And you know, don't vote against the budget. Don't vote for the budget here. That's fine. But stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Currie. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you. This time I'm going to ask a question about property. Councillor Lowe was talking about the new station out in the south end. Currently, the police have a property in Bay, in Bay Ward, pardon me, in Queen's View. It's an administrative building. We're currently working on secondary plans there, which means that there's a Queen's View station. There's going to be a transit station where we're looking at transit oriented development. This is a property that the city leases to the police services. And it would be an ideal spot for affordable housing. And I hope that you will consider this, because this would be a very strong gesture to consider finding another location for what is basically an administrative office. So it could be anywhere, perhaps amalgamating with other services. But I'd like you to take a look at that, because this is something that would be crucial for creating more affordable housing in the future, in an ideal location, right beside a transit station. So if I want to make sure you're aware of that, do you have any comments?
Mayor, through to Councillor Kavanaugh. Certainly not, wasn't, I've never heard that proposed before or that perspective. So certainly, we can take that away and examine that very idea.
I can tell you, we have excellent staff at the city for real estate who help in terms of, if you're, at least with the city, you can move to another location, and they're excellent at doing this. It's kind of our own RE/MAX team in the city. But I strongly suggest you look at it. I think it would be a very strong gesture to the community, because this is a place where it would be better to have housing than a one-story administrative building with a surface parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor De Roche?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Chief, to your first budget process. Look forward to, hi, Chief, look forward to, to welcome you, I hope, over the course of this year on a visit to Riverside South and Finlay Creek. And I think that you would find the community very receptive and very supportive of the work that you're doing, the work of your staff, both the residents and the business community in Riverside South and Finlay Creek. I'm certainly, you know, watching very closely as many South End residents are on plans for the south station, the decommissioning of the Littrem station. And I appreciate that we have considerable need to accommodate the force that is going to serve a fast-growing part of the city. But I'd be inclined to reduce the number of rooms and offices in that police station, not because I don't think you need them, but I really want to see, and I think the community wants to see, police on the road in the community. And hopefully, we're recruiting people who are, you know, passionate, good people to become police officers, but are committed to several years of serving the community on the front line. So again, I'm not going to intervene. It's the domain of the Police Services Board. But when I see that size of a police station, I really want assurances that the kind of force that we're building, the kind of transformation that we're going through that Councillor Currie is talking about, is aimed at having police in the community and on the front line and not in offices.
Chief, did you want to respond to that?
Please, just briefly, thank you, Councillor De Roche. For starters, I do have intentions. I know Deputy Bell did the bulk of the consultations with the councillors through this tight budget season. I do have intentions of visiting each ward and each councillor throughout the summer months, sort of in the non-budget season. So there's not such that press of getting through all of those meetings. So I thank you for the invite to Riverside South, and I'll be sure to get there. There's no doubt, and I understand your message of people on the road. They need to be on the road. That presence is key, something I support and have always supported in my career, that we're not doing, there's lots of work to do in the office. Unfortunately, five minutes of action, as they say, can result in hours and hours of paperwork to follow. So they have that balance, but we need to be out there, need to be seen. I hear that clearly.
Thank you. I don't get too many opportunities to ask you questions, I think on behalf of my residents. But I wonder if you could just speak to, in terms of this budget, the prioritization that you're putting on car thefts and the collaboration that you're undertaking with other jurisdictions to deal with what seems to be a very chronic problem in many parts of the city. Thank you.
Epidemic problem, councillor. There is no doubt that it has spiked like this community in this province has never seen with a particular group. We are part of a multi-agency policing group that is trying to tackle this, led by the OPP. All the major cities are involved, and we're at the table. I think Superintendent Dunlop is going for a visit down there Thursday, maybe tomorrow, to continue the talk. We do, we have formed an auto task, a task force group that is targeting and examining what's going on here in Ottawa in particular. I will say this, as a bit of great work that occurred, there was a theft of a vehicle last night, and our team responded very quickly and swarmed a certain area to try to locate the vehicle and located the vehicle leaving town towards Montreal and located the vehicle on the 174 or 417 split and did a tactical, a tactical maneuver to stop that vehicle without a high-speed pursuit with no damage and basically boxed and slowed the vehicle down, got the vehicle back and arrested that person. A great bit of work. They are, they're very tuned in, and they're upset about this. The police officers in the field are upset that this is happening. It's very sophisticated, very organized, and they're having success around the province. And we, as a group, as an industry of police agencies, have to work together to try to stop.
Thanks, Chief. That's encouraging. We're very good at writing letters, or the mayor's very good at writing letters here. So if you need assistance in that regard, I hope you'll let us know, whether it be to the province, or to the Insurance Bureau, or to the car industry. All of those have some role to help deal with this situation. That really, really rattles the community. It's not just the theft that affects us all in terms of the insurance kit that we all pay for, but just the rattling of the community in terms of the perception of public safety. So if we can send some letters and bolster kind of the voice that you're bringing to the work that you're doing, I'd be happy to sort of champion that at the council table. I'll be supporting your budget. I think there's still a lot of work to do. I'm, I think it's promising that you're talking about bringing a lot of innovation and aligning what I think are the expectations of the public to have a very modern and very professional police force. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor De Roche. Conseilleur Plante?
Oui, merci beaucoup. Je pose la question...
Thank you so much. We, we made, we have an ask with the federal government. We requested extra sums because of the protests. So people are coming here in Ottawa, they have the right to protest. But most of the time, they're protesting against the federal government, but we need locals to manage these protests. So where are we with this demand? How can we manage this situation?
Conseillere? Je souhaite que je peux répondre en français très bien, mais je pense que je comprends.
I will try to answer in French. I think I understand the question.
Demonstrations and major events is immense. It is a daily effort. There is no doubt. And we expend a lot of resources planning. And the day of the event really is, well, it is expensive as well, too. But there is so much work that is done prior to the event. We are actively looking to try to secure funding. It's a municipal cost as well, potentially provincial, potentially federal as well, too. And there is active meetings that are being held with those levels of government. And I can tell you that we are working very well together amongst the agencies. The Parliamentary Precinct, the director Larry Brooks and I have met on a number of occasions. The OPP, we're working very close with, as well as the RCMP. And I've seen that throughout the month of February with the convoy anniversary events, if you will. And as we're going into St. Patrick's Day and a potential visit by the President of the US that is coming very quickly without full confirmation of all the details, we're working very well with those agencies. But it is very costly, and it is something that we just can't keep up with, that workload. So we are actively pursuing that.
Merci beaucoup.
Merci.
Merci, Conseilleur Plante. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I wasn't planning on speaking, but then when Councillor Currie chose to speak, it was really coming alive for me, what I wanted to contribute to the conversation. So I will be voting against this budget today because of all of the exciting things to come. I do believe we are looking forward to 2024. And I did have the opportunity to talk to Steve Bell, and we were able to discuss the ideas of multi-year budgeting in order to tell the story. But I do think we need to look at the performance indicators that are most of interest to the community. What are the police doing that they are supposed to be doing? My car was stolen August 19th from my front driveway. Like, I get it, you know? It was, it's a sweet little Chevy Silverado. I don't know why it was stolen, but there it goes. And the police were very helpful that day. So I'm not trying to generalize in all aspects. But there are ways right now where we are seeing police where we do not need them, where they are not being helpful, and that there are better places for them to make sure that everyone feels safe. And so I'll be voting against this budget today because I believe that we can do better to tell the story about what response is appropriate at what time. And I know that my council colleagues are working hard on the Police Services Board to try and make this happen. So I wanted to be able to articulate that I will be voting against this budget in anticipation of what we can see for 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Councillor Menard?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Wasn't expecting the depth of conversation around the table today. I think there's been a lot of good input by all councillors. And obviously, knowing and hearing from, you know, the police chief as well about the support for mental health response, appreciate that, those words, as well as a lot of our other colleagues who understand the value of that. as well as a lot of our other colleagues who understand the value of that. And just, just in conversation, just seeing this conversation here, I've circulated a motion from Ms. Arthur McDonald that would allow for a $500,000 offset into mental health response teams. I know as a council, we want to accelerate that program. We've previously invested $550,000 in the past, this would almost double that amount. Any program of this sort, whether it be in 2023 or 2024, is going to require some money from council. We have a limited amount of funds in the city. 15.2 million to offset for 500,000, half a million is a very small percentage. And it's a percentage that has been identified in the police budget under the professional services efficiencies. So they identify their efficiencies. This is something that we can come back with and say, look, let's advance alternative call response and mental health. If you believe in alternative conscious mental health response and outreach teams, we're not funding it appropriately right now, we need to fund it. And there's, there's money available here to do so. And so the, the motion, I'll read it out, is that the 2023 Ottawa Police Services Board draft operating budget be reduced by 500,000 and that 500,000 be added to General Managers' Office Business Support Services and Community Safety Wellbeing Policy Analytics Operating Resource Requirement, page four, specifically to advance alternative call response and mental health outreach teams in 2023 and 2024. I hope that, Mayor, we can support this, it is a very modest amount compared to the larger Police Services Board. This, as far as I understand it, given the efficiencies that have been found to the reduction to professional services, which is on page 122 of the Ottawa Police Services Operating Budget. This is something that I think we as a council need to signal, we care about this priority, it's a small amount of money to transfer over and it'll almost double what we've previously put into this that we know we're going to need in 2023 and 2024. I've heard, Mayor, I know we've said, let's accelerate this program. And to get a program like this started, you need to find it, and it's not just in one particular ward, this is right across the city, right? Every ward could use this, every ward gets mental health calls, every single one. And so let's make sure that, that we're allocating this across the city and that we invest in a priority for a modest amount of money. So thank you, Mayor, and I hope we can pass this here today.
Thank you, Councillor Menard, I'll just ask Donna Gray, if you don't mind, could you speak to whether you would be able to invest this extra $500,000 on a mental health response this year?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if the question I'm hearing is, you know, the work that we need to do in 2023 that we've planned to execute to get to an alternate response, and it probably wasn't clear in my explanation and it came up yesterday at committee around, you're doing all that work for 550,000. Well, in addition to the 550,000, the investments that police are making to contribute to our joint solution is the training of dispatch that I spoke to, it is the call diversion work that we need to do and as part of EMS and it is support in figuring out those alternate responses as well. So there is money, and maybe the chief could speak to that, that is their contribution to that solution. So, you know, for mental health, obviously there's more need in the community than there is funding in the broader mental health, but if you're speaking to me and asking me the question around, can we do the alternate response that I spoke to with the existing funds and support from police's budget? Yes, we can.
Thank you. Chief Stubbs, did you want to speak to what, what's happening and also what impact the reduction of $500,000 in the police budget would have? Because I understand your, Councillor Menard, you're saying this, this is the efficiencies that were identified by the police?
That's correct, Mayor, and just to clarify too, it's for 2023 and 2024, it'll be two years out and obviously we know 550 is not enough, but a two-year, I understand for 2023 wouldn't be fully utilized, but in future years as well, which is why we allocated previously and hasn't all been spent, that 550, I know this will be for future years as well, so, and yes, it's, speaking to the comments earlier about the reduction of professional services, there's a $520,000 savings that have been found by the OPS on page 122 of the City of Ottawa OPS Budget Binder.
That $520,000 in efficiencies that were found, I presume have already been reallocated in the budget, right? They're not just sitting there unused, is that correct?
Right, we have, we have used for the $401 million is accounted for, if you will.
Yeah, so can you, if this police budget were to be reduced by $500,000, what would be the impact of that?
Well, we would have to consider what we would have to save, you know, to make up that $500,000. I might just let Deputy Bell speak a bit more to that.
Thank you, Chief, yeah, Mr. Mayor, so what's, though, the efficiencies we found around those professional services have been allocated towards the hiring of more resources to offset the work that was being done by outsourcing the body of work that they were doing. So there would need to be the reduction of four positions within the organization, within this budget, if we were to remove that $500,000.
Okay, and Donna Gray mentioned the work that the, the contribution that the police are already making in resources towards this response, and I know you've also hired additional mental health resources or are planning to hire through the budget additional mental health resources, can you put a number on that?
Yes, so we, we plan on investing internally $500,000, which is part of our base budget within the mental health programs. That will include the continuation with the Guiding Council on the call deferral evaluation and setting up that system, that fourth pillar that Donna spoke about, as well as looking at hiring and training, hiring a mental health resource and then training all of our mental health staff in order to better bring calls in, better triage them, to set them up to be sent out to an alternative response.
Okay, so there's already roughly $500,000 in the police budget that is allocated towards mental health support and the project that Donna Gray's team is working on.
That is correct.
Thank you. Councillor Trauster.
Thank you very much, I was happy to second Councillor Menard's motion for a number of reasons. First of all, the good examples that we're seeing, another example, people mentioned Toronto, Denver, Colorado, which had a similar program, an alternative mental health crisis response team. Apparently, more than 3,000 calls have been attended to through this alternative source with the involvement of police. The best practice in these projects is to have them exist completely outside of the police system. So when we're talking about moving resources into the community, we're not, I understand the work that you're doing internally within the police force and I really value that partnership with Donna Gray's department. But, you know, just this year, I know, Councillor Currie, you mentioned the Ottawa Community Housing Internal Security Team, which is another example of a non-police crisis response. They approached me when I went to one of the Christmas parties at 415 McLaren to tell me that their proactive outreach program, that the funding had ended for that and that they could no longer do that proactive response in their building. Similarly speaking, you know, there's very tenuous funding for the homeless crisis relief work that comes out of Somerset West Communities Health Centre and also their DOP programme, which is, which is, works with people who use drugs. And so I just want to say that the call for an alternative to policing is coming, it's also coming from business owners, it's coming very loudly from business owners in my ward, who say we need someone off the call. We know that it's not, it's not financially responsible and it's not effective to send, have five or six officers arrive when somebody is dealing with a crisis that is clearly related to mental health or poverty or addiction. And so even if this money can't be used exactly in 2023, even if it does extend to 2024, as Councillor Menard mentioned, I do think that this is important, both practically and symbolically, to show that investing on alternatives means moving money out of policing and into community services and that community safety and wellbeing encompasses so much more than policing. And it is really frustrating to see how fight, how hard we have to fight, I keep saying we're fighting for scraps, but our frontline services are not keeping up with needs and these are the services that do prevent crime, which is why I support this motion, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Trauster, Conseilier Plante.
Thank you, Councillor Menard, I was just wondering if you could elaborate a bit more on the need for services outside of Ward 12. Yesterday, we heard about eight hours of delegations of people basically begging for services outside of the core, core that I'm specifically referring to Ward 12, so I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a bit, please, merci.
Thanks very much, and just, just like we've seen in Toronto, there's been specific areas set up all across that city for this pilot. Their pilot is between 7.2 and 7.9 million dollars annually in a three-year pilot. Obviously Ottawa's going to need funding, not that much funding, but, you know, about a fourth of that funding for us to get our setup. And we get calls all the time, I can tell you on Bank Street, there's calls constantly for mental health support, constantly for, you know, addictions issues, constantly for homelessness. And so this is a right across the city issue. Obviously, you know, services tend to be concentrated and we need to make sure that this response team is able to go right across the city where that demand is and where Ottawa Police receive these calls through the 911 service. So we know from that pilot in Toronto that they set up specific areas all across the city that, that were, you know, being piloted. This, I suspect the same is needed here in Ottawa, it's not just one particular area where it's concentrated in.
Can I ask a follow-up? Deputy Chief Bell, could you also touch upon the need for services outside of Ward 12, please? Merci.
So I, I think we repeatedly hear as a police service and as everyone in this room, the need for mental health services right across the city, we're a very large geography. So we know that in, where I live in Canada, there's need for mental health services, addiction support services. So I don't think, I don't think I have any empirical data to share here, but we know in all of our conversations and every one of my conversations with the councillors around this table, there was the call for more services and a loud call for more mental health and social service supports from every corner of the city.
Merci, Conseilier Plante, Councillor Lulov.
So we have two willing partners here, sitting at this table, working on the exact same issue. So taking money from one to give to the other is going to make no material difference whatsoever. We're having a discussion about reallocating funds from a budget that's been passed by a board undermining their work for symbolism. This is not a valuable use of our time, nor is it particularly honest. Taking $500,000 from police to give to community and social services when they're both working on the exact same issue is a shell game. And again, it makes no material difference whatsoever, I will be voting against this motion, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lulov, Councillor Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor, a question, just to, for our point of clarity on the four positions that would be removed if we were to move forward with this reallocation, are those uniformed officers or are those civilians?
So those will be civilian positions, so civilian positions like would support as a mental health worker within our communication center, so they aren't, the money we've allocated is not for uniform position, it is for civilian positions.
Okay, so you said that they would be mental health workers?
They could be drawn on to, to invest in the mental health workers that we're talking about and placing in our communication center this year, that we're planning to place in our communication center in this year.
Okay, I guess where I struggle with this budget is that, you know, the previous board had set, as you said, an aggressive efficiency target and the goal of that was to reinvest in community, in particular in alternative call response models, which is why I had, had asked that question around why that was being reinvested into the service as opposed to into the community through, you know, Donna's group. You know, and this isn't just $500,000, it's $500,000, $500,000 of base funding in perpetuity. So this will then increase that budget year after year after year, so we can make meaningful investments and move into upon our alternative call response model. So I know that we say that they're doing the same work, but they're, but they're not, this is a different, this is a different model, this is a different way of responding to people in need, it will result in better outcomes for people in our city and frankly, it will be more cost-effective, dollar for dollar. So I'm going to be supporting Councillor Menard's motion and, and if this passes, I will be supporting the police budget and if not, I will have to dissent on the budget. But I, you know, and Deputy Chief Bell and I, we have a long history and we had a great meeting the other day and, you know, I appreciate all the work that the police do in our community, but I think that this is a really important initiative that we need to make movement on. We heard 40 some odd delegations yesterday, mostly located in the Byward Market, asking for more services and they, you know, they touched on security points, but really what they were saying is that we needed more services in, in mental health and I think that this will start us in the right direction in making those investments, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bradley, Councillor Devine.
Thank you, Mayor, I think some of my questions had been answered a little bit. Deputy, Deputy Chief Bell, when, when the mayor was asking what impact the 500,000 in cuts would have and you said that it would be in, in four positions and I think I understood from Councillor Bradley right now that those positions would be for civilians who would be engaged to some extent in social, in, in, in respond to what I guess we're trying to have the money be diverted to. But for those, no, then no? Phil, please, correct.
Sorry, so what, those positions, they would be for civilian positions that would be invested into our, the start of the investment into our communication center as staff who would provide mental health supports within that area for incoming calls.
Okay, thank you, but, but they're not yet positions filled, so we are not, this, this would not be, this would not be diminishing your current force, this would be diminishing your anticipated growth, is that correct?
No, because we also need to invest in the program to establish the call deferral system as well as the mental health supports that are going to be in there. There will be costs around continuing to work with Donna, her team, community safety, wellbeing team and the guiding council to implement the pilots that they have and that's where we're allocating our money to support that work this year.
Thank you, and a question for Donna Gray and thank you for your patience with me, but you know, this is a motion that I'm just dealing with right now. It does sound, you know, at the surface level, that this motion is looking to put more funding towards, you know, to more force, more funding away from police towards community services to do what it sounds like even the police are gradually aiming towards doing, it's just perhaps doing it a little bit faster than we had anticipated today. But, Ms. Gray, you were saying that when Councillor Menard was, when the question was asked about whether or not this 500,000 would better support your path of trying to advance your department's role in this and it sounded like you were saying that at the moment you are adequately funded to, to achieve what you're looking to get done here now, today, but with this 500,000, which first of all was not just for 2023, but I believe for 2024 as well, would this not, forgive the dumb question, but would this not help you do more as we are aiming towards diverting this in general?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think there's, I think there's a number of issues that have been put on the table and I think with regards to the first question around the plan that we have to create an alternate police response, that's the culmination of work that we're doing today that we think will lead to a bigger investment needed in 2024, which I think Councillor Menard is saying, advancing that, knowing that that's going to come at some point. I think the other issue that we've heard loud and clear, I think with Councillor Trauster saying is that there is increased need for mental health response, which I think is, you know, outside of the work that we're doing now and we, we heard that, and I think that, that really is a decision of council around the priorities and where you want to invest in this budget. But when we come back to, you know, the plan that we have and the work that we have, the combined work that we have right now, we can do that now.
Meaning you can do that now without additional funds, is that correct?
That's right, but anticipating, I think, what Councillor Menard is saying, will you need funds in to advance this work in 2024 going into those? Absolutely, I'm guaranteed that we cannot do this work without an enhancement of some sort of service in mental health as we move forward. Do you need that right now at this point in time on the floor today, not to do this work? Your decision of council is if you wanted to go into mental health and you think that that mental health support, that's, that's for council's decision in this budget, not, not for my recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor Devine, Councillor Hill.
Thank you very much, perhaps this is more procedural, but I just wanted to clarify what I heard early on from, from Ms. Gray. Do you have the ability to absorb and effectively use this $500,000 in 2023 if this was to go forward? And if not, is this a question for the 24 budget, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do we have the ability to absorb, if it's the broader mental health question around, is there a gap in mental health services that needs to be filled and could we fill that with 500,000? Yes. If the question is, do we need this work to advance with the council priority of the alternate police response that you've directed us to do in the budget? No, I believe that we can do that with the existing supports and that the full model will come in the 2024 budget for full investment.
Thank you very much. Just, thank you, Councillor Hill, just before we go to Councillor Leaper, Chief Stubbs or Deputy Chief Bell is, is there, I know in the past the police have supported the funding of the Guiding Council, is that your intention going forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so we have supported from the outset, the Guiding Council, particularly from a funding perspective, the Secretariat. So for the past 18-plus months, that's money that we've funded in order to benefit, to build on the work that the Guiding Council has done and start to implement. and start to implement the pilots from the policing perspective that they're engaged in. We have advised them that as of the end of March, as of the end of this month, we'll no longer be supporting the secretariat, so the administrative function, as they transition to program implementation. We will still have money going towards the work of the guiding council. It just won't be around administration. It'll be around program implementation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Leaper.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I I do feel as though we're kind of circling around an issue that I I think clearly divides council at this point, which is who's going to be responsible for responding to mental health calls? We're hearing from police about police involvement with the response. There are groups that councillor Trauster has spoken about, uh, who are working with the community health centers, the dope group. There are folks who can provide housing help or working in civil society. There's a plethora of groups who can provide an alternative to the response that police are trained to provide, which is oftentimes uh detaining, moving people on use of force. I want to be really crystal clear. I am contemplating that an alternative response to mental health, to opioid, to housing problems is a non-police response. And there is no end to the work that needs to get done to prepare us for the day when we have an effective, non-police response. Police have a role to play. Dispatchers are going to have to be trained. We're going to have to have them as full partners in in determining how the uh the telephone operators are going to triage and then implement a a system of of alternative response. But the actual response I have to anticipate is going to be provided by those civil society groups. And they're starving for resources today. They do not have the resources to provide. And I I want to be really clear as well that in Wellington Village and in Hintonburg and in West uh Westboro, to councillor Trauster's point, the businesses and the residents, they don't want to call police for a police response. They want somebody who's going to come and help with housing issues, with mental health issues, with uh addictions issues, with health issues, with poverty issues. And we have to start flowing funds into those groups today. They're going to be partners in this effort. If a proper alternative response to mental health is is developed over the next several years. And we need to start incorporating them as partners today. We need to start helping them build capacity, capacity to have the right people in place, the right training in place. It's not just going to be the city and police who are trained up and resourced to provide this new response. We're going to have to depend on the people who are already trying to provide this response today. I I'm not necessarily overly invested in in finding $500,000 uh out of one efficiency. I absolutely get that the police have probably put that um put that efficiency savings back into getting a dispatch center up and ready to start providing alternative response. But we do need to find significant new funds to start building the capacity in this sector. I I I think I will be supporting councillor Menard's motion. But I I also want to make sure that we are not skirting the issue and that people are being clear about what they consider that alternative response to be. Because I do feel as though we're skirting around it today. And I don't think that's being honest with any of the stakeholders, including our residents. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leaper. Councillor De Rush.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wonder if if through you, if I could get an answer of, is this motion in order? I I guess I had always understood that our role here was to vote yes or no on the police budget and that we didn't have authority to to influence the uh the line by line. And I'm not trying to be mischievous here procedurally, Mr. Mayor. I I think again, I think there'd be people asking that question because I think it was a I was always told that you you you, you know, it's a yes or no decision today. And we just had an auditor general's report, you know, part of that was, hey, follow follow procedures, follow proper process. And this is a last minute motion, didn't go through the vetting. So again, I I'm not trying to be mischievous here. I just would like to hear that this this motion's in order. Thank you.
Okay, um, David White.
Mayor, um, with respect to what's provided in the Police Services Act, council is not bound to accept the estimates of submitted by the Police Services Board. It can set a different amount. Um, it can provide more, it can provide less. What council does not permitted to do is to identify a line item or several line items within the budget. All it can do is set the overall total and it is then up to the board in consultation with the chief and the OPS to determine how it will deal with that budget reduction. If if the board is of the view that it cannot provide adequate and effective policing with that budget reduction, it may ask the Ontario Civil and Police Commission to adjudicate that question. There are a couple of other things just to unpack from that motion. And I defer to the clerk in the context of of process and procedure, given that what the what council is considering right now is just the board budget and not the other piece about um the redirection of the funds that would come from that. Um, but it should also be clear with respect to the 2024 budget, the changes that were implemented by Bill Three and the regulations that came with that provide that the mayor will will provide each year the budget. So what council can consider at this point is the 2023 budget. Similarly, it sets the 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 format of the timeline of the estimates of the Police Services Board, and it's done that. And that that is for the 2023 budget.
Thank you, David White. Did you want to speak to? Did someone from the city clerk's office want to speak to the whether the motion is in order or not?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just following up on Mr. White's comments. And and I want to be clear to council, my staff helped draft this motion. And and I sometimes disagree with my staff from time to time. So when I saw it, I would have preferred a recommended approach whereby therefore be resolved specifically dealt with just the Police Services Board budget that is in front of council to reduce that budget by 500,000. And then with respect later on today, when we are dealing with the community services budget, there would have been a supplementary motion increasing that budget by $500,000. Thank you.
But you're saying the motion is in order. Is that? Your mic's not on.
Same, Mr. Mayor. Um, that I would have preferred the the motion to be two motions. Um, I understand that we could probably implement it in a legal fashion at the end of the day if it is carried.
Thank you. Councillor De Rush, anything else?
No further questions.
Thank you. Councillor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not actually not sure if my questions for the chief or or the clerk or or legal. If we were to adjust the police services budget and if the Police Services Board or the OPS were to disagree, is there a step that they have, is is there another option that they have to maybe appeal it in some way? Because my worry is that we're going to end up using more time and resources to well, both of us, like the city and and police, will be using more time and resources to, you know, fight and try to try to convince our our side, try to uh kind of play up our side.
Mayor, obviously, it's open to the to the boarding consultation with with the chief to determine whether that is viable. However, there is nothing provided in the Police Services Act in terms of an alternative. The only course, if the board does not believe that it can provide adequate and effective policing with the budget that council sets is to the OCPC. Um, and that would, um, and that would be one of those situations that the AG identified where each side with them were required to have independent counsel on.
Okay, thanks very much.
Just to follow up on that, uh, Mr. White, and I'm sorry, I I didn't hear all of your answer, but if if the police budget is changed today, the police service can appeal. Is that correct?
Mayor, if the, and and this is again, just citing the Police Services Act, if the board is of the view that the amount established by council for its budget is is inadequate, um, and it can't, it cannot provide adequate and effective policing in accordance with the municipality's needs, then it has recourse to the Ontario Civil and Police Commission to adjudicate that.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say? Yep, please go ahead. Councillor Menard.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Just just on wrap up, um, you know, appreciate the discussion around the table. This is a good discussion. It's an important one we have to have.
Councillor, I'm just going to jump in. Do you, I was going to say a few words. I don't, I don't, I'm happy to go after you, but if you want to.
Whatever you'd like.
But if you want to keep going, I'll go after you.
I'm happy to wrap up whenever you'd like me to.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
And I'll, yep.
Thank you. So just to say, I really appreciate my colleagues' points about this. And these things aren't easy, um, of course. I know the previous council has set a goal to have these mental health response teams launched. This current council has also set that goal. And I think that the the foremost point here is that mental health response teams save police money. If you want to save money for the police so they can do other things, then you need to invest in mental health response teams to do so. In every jurisdiction where these are implemented, it's a two for one savings at least. So the point about not wanting to, um, you know, remove money from the police because you're concerned about where those resources might go, this this will save them money in the future. Because the program in Toronto diverted 1,500 calls, eighty percent of those calls were diverted to a group that can do it for less money with better outcomes. And we heard the police chief uh in Toronto. We had our, we heard our own police chief, and I appreciate the comments from the police chief saying that those results were surprising. I think they were. They they were surprising in that they were so effective. So if you want to save money for the police and you want to reinvest those priorities in the future, and we want to do what we say we were going to do, which is to accelerate the mental health response teams in Ottawa in 2023 and 2024, we're going to have to find funding. This won't even cover it. We're going to need more than this. And so that budget coming back in 2024, you're going to see a bigger request from that. This is a chunk of it, though. It's a part of it. And it's coming from the area that's going to experience the savings as a result of the program. Right? Who's going to save when we put in mental health response teams? Which budget line items are going to save? It's the police that are going to save. Very clearly. And so this is a small amount of the 401 million, 401 million, it's $500,000. What percentage is that? Zero point two something? My math's off. Zero point two percent? So we say this is a big priority for us. Let's invest in it. Let's do the right thing here and save the police money in the future because we've been so proactive on this. I think the pilot in Toronto is indicative, Mayor. They spend 7.2 to 7.9 million on a three year project. They're gaining savings as a result, and they're seeing the results come back to us. I appreciate Ms. Gray and I thank her for the 35 years of service. I have utmost respect for for uh what Ms. Gray has done, the accomplishments you've 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 had in the municipality. And uh the work that you've done on the guiding council to get us to this point. And I heard your comments about the need for that funding in in the future. 2023, 2024, and I know the accelerated, the push to accelerate. I said on the radio the other day, Mayor, that like there's talk amongst council, we want to accelerate this program. And I I believe in in you and and you're going to do it. I think you're going to be the mayor that brings this in finally in our city that needs it. So let's work together on this. I don't think this needs to be a big divisive issue. It's a small amount of money. There's going to be effective police services, and we're investing a priority we say we all support. So let's get behind this. Let's save the police some money in the future. And let's get a mental health response team established in the city of Ottawa as soon as possible. I hope my colleagues can support this today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Menard. And I I wanted to give you the option of either going before me or after me because I don't know, you know, I don't always have to have the last word. And if you if you hear me say something here that you want to respond to, I'll gladly have you speak again. So I've listened to what everybody's said, including you, councillor Menard. And I think you know, I think we all want the same thing at the end of the day, which is to move forward as quickly as possible with an alternative response to uh mental health calls in our community. And this is an issue that I have spoken about many times as a as a resident of Ottawa, as a volunteer in the mental health space and uh as a candidate last year and since I was elected. And I, so I, you know, I support the intent of the motion. I think we all want to invest in this. I'm I'm not going to support the motion respectfully, but I'm I'm saying that because I think, because I want to support the work that's already being done by the police service and by by Donna Gray's department, Community and Social Services. I want to support the great work of the Ottawa Police Services Board in finalizing a budget for 2023 without council overriding that uh work and and taking money out of the police budget. I think we can accomplish what we need to accomplish and more in 2023 without additional financial resources being taken from the police budget. I think there are other sources of funding which we've already identified that we potentially could tap into. And I'm also a little bit uncomfortable with, you know, my my preference, and I know this is all within, you know, the normal process with a budget and with any council meeting, but you know, my preference is to do this kind of work outside council meetings, not during council meetings. I I would always prefer that we try to find solutions, as we've been doing with many other pieces of the budget over the last month, that we try to find solutions through meaningful conversations that sometimes take longer than we have at a council meeting to identify whether we're making a big difference with a change that we make of this nature. And I know it's compared to the police budget, a small amount of money, but it is $500,000. It is four positions. It is changing the police services plans for 2023, which have already been approved by the Police Services Board. So, you know, my preference would be to do this kind of work outside a meeting and do it, you know, with staff and with the police service working together. So I still support the direction of the guiding council. I still support accelerating that work. I still support trying to find ways that the police will do much less of this. And and uh there will be other resources that will be devoted to this going forward outside the police service. I think we're on the same page on all of that. And I commit to moving this forward as quickly as possible uh in 2023 and beyond. But for the reasons I mentioned, I won't, I won't support the motion, but I will commit to moving all of these issues forward as quickly as possible after this meeting. So if there are no other comments, I think we'll move to a recorded vote on councillor Menard's motion.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor Lulov.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Currie.
No.
Councillor Kits.
No.
Councillor Carr.
No.
Councillor Divine.
Yes.
Councillor DeRus.
No.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor DeRush.
No.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Trauster.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
No.
Conseil plant.
Weep.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
No.
Ten yeas, fifteen nays.
Okay, thank you. And again, um, I believe we all want the same thing and we'll move forward as quickly as we can on all of this. So are there are there any other comments on the Police Services draft operating in capital budgets?
Yeas and nays, Mayor.
Okay, yep. So if we could call the vote on that, please.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Lulov.
Yes.
Councillor King.
No.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Currie.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Councillor Carr. Councillor Divine.
No.
Councillor DeRus.
Yes.
Councillor Brown.
Yes.
Councillor Lowe.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
No.
Councillor DeRush.
Weep.
Councillor Bradley.
No.
Councillor Trauster.
No.
Councillor Leaper.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor Menard.
Uh, no, thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Yes.
Conseil plant.
Weep.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Yes.
Yes.
Seventeen yeas, eight nays.
Thank you. Let's move to the Ottawa Public Library Board Draft Operating and Capital Budget as recommended by the Ottawa Public Library Board. And I understand there's a motion from councillor Brockington. Councillor Brockington, is that right?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just wait for the CEO. That direction. It's on the screen.
I think you can go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So, thank you for the opportunity. So people of Ottawa certainly appreciate and recognize the importance of the Ottawa Public Library, not just in our city, but in the neighborhoods that span the four corners. River Ward is certainly no exception. Despite no immediate local library, residents travel to avail themselves of resources at our branches, and they make use of the alternative service delivery model, whether it be bookmobiles, limited in programming, some limited in-person programming, and we have the kiosk and hold lockers that serve on Riverside Park communities. In River Ward, we have strong, engaged cohorts of residents who champion increased OPL presence in the ward, and I thank them for their passionate advocacy. Recently, there have been a number of discussions on how to augment the service, both in the short, medium, and long term, and I want to recognize some good discussions that have happened with the CEO of the OPL and the chair, and even your office, Mr. Mayor. And really, this is about looking at co-developing a strategy going forward. So in the interest of time, there's a motion here that's been worked on by all sides, and I do want to acknowledge and appreciate where we have got to today, and I'll simply read, "Be it resolved that as a result of greater investment in community development described in the Ottawa Public Library 2023 Budget, City Council requests that the Ottawa Public Library Board direct its staff to initiate the activities of the community development function in Ward sixteen, River Ward, meeting with the councillor and community association leaders to discuss priorities and to consider input regarding the expansion of OPL programming and services in the area." And again, I just want to acknowledge, acknowledge the conversations that have happened that have got us to this point today, and I thank the OPL very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington, and appreciate the, the work that's been done on this, and my understanding is that, that staff have already agreed to this effectively in a, in correspondence with you. We can confirm that, but, and just to be clear, just from a procedural point of view, this, this, in a different context, this could have been done perhaps as a direction, but because it's a, a police board, it can't be done as a direction, it has to be a motion. So just to, just to provide some context on that. But councillor Lulov, did you want to speak to that?
Please, a bit, a bit of an awkward situation for me as well, being also the respondent and also the seconder of this, so bear with me for a moment. We are, we are certainly prioritizing community development work in the 2023 draft budget with an investment of approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which establishes a dedicated team, including two full-time employees, and we'll also reassign one full-time employee to be doing this community development work, which is just so important in a city that's as large as, as, as ours. And given the fact that most of the branches that we do have are, you know, remnants of amalgamation, this community development work in wards, especially where, you know, we, we may not have a physical presence, is very, is very, very important. Staff expertise and guidance is the most impactful resource that we can allocate to this work, and we've heard from the community a desire to work in closer partnerships. So this budget sets the direction to meet that need. Specifically, our staff are going to initiate and manage community relationships, plan resulting service offerings. Sometimes they'll be delivering it themselves, and sometimes with other staff in service areas, and we'll collect feedback to evaluate success, and we'll continue the conversation with partners based on these outcomes. So this work is gonna be undertaken by a team, and will inform any possible additional recommendations in the 2024 budget and beyond. So River Ward residents specifically, and residents from across the city can expect to see the work happening, you know, in their ward expand or, or expand by or before September twenty twenty-three. As the community development team is established, the conversations get underway, and our staffing situation improves overall, which is, which is good news. In River Ward, increased OPL service offerings could include additional storytimes at the community center. A spring session is planned right now, you know, events, presentations, programs focused on other age groups and interests, targeted programs held at partner organizations and more. Depending on the needs and depending on the feedback that comes out of, of this discussion, which we're committed to, to beginning in, in River Ward, but will also be across the city. I think it's important that we engage with, with residents in all wards across the city. So, again, this work's not gonna be limited to River Ward, so don't, don't worry. Everyone around the table will, will be in your areas too. And in fact, we don't allocate services based on ward, it's based on geography. So we'll indeed reach out to all members of council for similar support, leveraging their knowledge and relationships with their communities, and we're, we're glad to have respect, receptive and engaged communities to provide input into this work. So thank you very much. And I, I appreciate my colleague working with us on this, or being, or ensure that when this, when this does come to the board, I'll, I'll support it, and, and we'll undergo this work in earnest. I'll turn it over to the chief librarian and CEO if she'd like to make a comment as well.
Thank you, yes indeed, and we're very glad to have engagement. While libraries are strongly associated with silence, having a very vocal community that is receptive is a signal of engagement, and that's of course very important to us. So I'm glad that we have established a budget that sets a direction to take advantage of, of those relationships and look forward to developing them further. Just to clarify, that community development is a key mechanism by which we initiate and manage those long-term relationships, and importantly, it does so beyond the walls of our bricks and mortar location. And so what is provided for in this budget, I think is entirely appropriate for the needs expressed by the community. Thank you.
Thank you both. Let's go next to councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For staff, I think I just heard that we have the adequate resources in the twenty-three budget in order to essentially do what's being asked for in this motion. And I think what I've also heard in the motion is that we're looking to have continued community engagement and dialogue in order to ensure that there are no gaps in coverage for library services and support. So I don't completely understand what the value of the motion is, generally speaking. And my concern would be, and perhaps if staff could, could provide a response, is there a mechanism with which this motion, if it is approved, could undermine some of the longer-term programming of the OPL?
Thank you for the question. It's an important question. The budget provides for increased community development work, and it's important to understand that the OPL already undertakes a fairly impressive level of community development work, so this allows us to expand it. What the motion does is commits the library to initiating that work in River Ward, where we do have a legacy gap in services, and where we know that there's a very receptive community. And that can be a test case for us, a bit of a pilot, to see how those conversations can run. But certainly, those examples would be carried out through other wards, because part of the goal of this group is to ensure consistency across the system.
Councillor Hill, I know that you're particularly interested in, in risk analysis, and, and so I do want, I do want to mention that we are undergoing a gap, a service gap analysis through two different mechanisms right now, one being our service delivery framework, that we'll be looking at this term of board, and also our facilities framework. And so this work is, it will, will only add to the analysis that's being completed on those two projects. So I don't see it as undermining any work. I see it as being a natural part of the work that, that is underway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Kits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what the councillor is doing with this motion, advocating for increased services and programming in their ward. But River Ward is not the only ward without a branch. Ward nineteen doesn't have a branch, and my residents actually have to travel farther, or in some cases, much farther, to reach a branch. So, can I ask how many wards are in that situation? There are four. Four, okay. So, you know, I understand very clearly from, from both your comments that that work to identify those gaps is being undertaken this year, and that there will be engagement with all wards. But since the motion is speaking to gaps in coverage and shining a spotlight on one ward over other wards, can I ask the mover for a friendly amendment to include all wards that don't have a branch in the motion? So that engagement is...
Councillor Brockington, did you want to speak to that?
I would just ask the OPL to respond if that would include anything in addition to what you're already committing to, because we've just heard the chair and yourself talk about outreach with every councillor for his or her ward. So I'll, I'll yield to you before, I'm, I'm open to the suggestion, but I just want to make sure there's a net benefit to what's being proposed.
Thank you. Yeah, the motion directs staff, requests staff to initiate this work in River Ward, because we know we have very fertile ground and a very receptive community there. But it wouldn't obviate that same work occurring elsewhere. And so, I'll, I'll leave aside any, any wording around the wording of the, of the amendment, but the intention of staff and what this budget provides for is to undertake that work in a consistent manner. It's about the starting point for that work.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that you're indifferent, because the work is gonna happen anyway. So whether it's captured in the motion or not, it's happening. Okay. Thank you.
We will ensure to, to, to be doing the same kind of work in your ward as well, councillor. The Ottawa Public Library is, is quite good at walking and chewing gum at the same time, so I think we'll, we'll be undergoing all of this work at the same time.
Thank you. I think, you know, based on that, I think I will be dissenting on the motion just because I don't think it's necessary. I think that work is already happening. I think we heard that at the board, and we heard that again today. You know, and I don't want my residents to feel that there's, you know, special attention being paid to another ward over my ward, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kits. Councillor Currie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this motion is really neither here nor there, because we have such support for it. However, I will say, having sat on the Caldwell Family Centre board there in, in councillor Brockington's ward for many years, what was astonishing were the EDI scores for that area and school readiness. So absolutely, there are wards that don't have library branches, but there are wards, in addition to that, that have very low EDI scores, where we know schools, kids are not ready for school. I think councillor Brockington's ward, only twenty-nine percent of kids are ready for school. You see in other wards that number's up around eighty. So it highlights the need for libraries, it highlights the need for a consultation on how those resources can get to kids and families, and obviously not just children, literacy is important for everyone. However, as I said, this motion, neither here nor there, I'll be supporting it, but I'm glad to hear that this may affect other consultations as well. And I, I'm sure you look at the EDI scores, but I would just highlight them as a very important marker.
The gap analysis that we're doing as part of our facilities framework will certainly be looking at that, that's part of the metrics. So we will certainly be looking at EDI scores and, and need in community. We're, we're looking at this through a community equity lens, so yes, that, that is absolutely something that is going to be looked at through the facilities framework as well. And I don't know if the CEO would like to comment further on that, but this, this is, this is baked into the process. That, that will be part of our, you know, our metrics for deciding how to prioritize programming and services and, and, and the like moving forward.
Thank you. I'll just clarify a little bit, if I may, that our first data point that we use is to take a neighborhood and use ONS, the Ottawa Neighborhood Study, data to determine distance, average walking distance, pedestrian distance to a local branch. That's the gateway criteria. And we have different distances for different sectors of the city. And then once a sec, a neighborhood is through that gateway criteria, then we apply those other lenses in order to prioritize those gaps. So it would be informed by those factors.
Thank you very much. I mean, that is the other part of it. We used to do that at the school board. We look at what are the transportation routes to the libraries in terms of public transit. So all of these things factor into what EDI scores end up being. So anyway, thank you. I'm quite reassured, and I'll support it whether it's necessary or not.
Thank you, councillor Currie. All right, then, on the motion by councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Lulov, is the motion carried?
Dissent, please.
Dissent? Okay, sorry, I'll just, I want to make sure we capture all the dissents. Okay, I think councillor Low dissented as well. Is that right? Anyone else? Yeah, we've, we've got that one. Thank you. Okay, carried. And then, any further comments on the library board budget? Is the budget carried?
Good.
Thank you, everyone. We are finished, page one. Item five, the Ottawa Board of Health Draft Operating Budget as recommended by the City of Ottawa's Board of Health. We will deal with this in three parts. Councillor Currie has a declaration of interest on item five A, the Ministry of Health Programs and Standards, cost shared core programs. So, any comments on that? Any questions? Is that carried?
Carried.
All right. Five B is the remaining Ottawa Public Health budget. Is that carried?
Good.
Item C is the recommendation set out in a Board of Health motion to co-sign letters with the Chair of the Board of Health to the Province of Ontario. Is that carried?
Good.
You? All right, we will move now to city budgets as recommended by the standing committees of council, starting with the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee portion of the Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. Any questions or comments on that? Is it carried?
Good.
Hey. The Audit Committee portion of the 2023 Draft Operating Budget. Is that carried?
Good.
Page two is way better than page one. Hope I didn't jinx it. Number eight, the Community Services Committee portion of the 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. I understand there is a motion from councillor Menard. Councillor Menard?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Hopefully I have more success on this one. I'll just read it, read it in here. Come on screen. So, this is for myself and councillor Truster on portable toilets and waiting pool hours. I think I'll just read the "Therefore be it resolved", I just, I do want to thank, before I do, thank your office for helping to, to, to draft and work on this together, and recognize the, the need in this area going forward as well. So it's "Therefore be it resolved that the required base budget adjustment of thirty-three thousand for the rental costs of an additional forty-eight portable toilets and seventeen thousand for the opening of a select number of geographically dispersed waiting pools on Canada Day and the August Civic Holiday, be funded by a fifty thousand dollar reduction in the tax-supported services diesel fuel budget, and be it further resolved that the department consult with each ward councillor on selecting priority park locations for the new portable toilets, and be it further resolved that staff be directed to review options to increase the operating season for waiting pools in 2024, as well as washroom operating hours for existing facilities, and bring these forward as part of the 2024 budget for city council consideration." And just very brief motivation on, on this, Mayor, each councillor would, would have two extra locations for their ward, so you can pick based on where you're, you're seeing that need in your ward for, for more bathroom use, whether it be high-use sports fields or parks in your area. The other, the other piece of this is, obviously, we have a lot of washrooms that aren't opened, but they exist in current facilities. And there's, there's, there's a future cost to that, but that, that's a small cost to have quality life increases, I think, in the future for 2024. Our waiting pools, obviously, we've got some, some staggering that happens. I worked with Dan Chenier's office to better understand that. I think you all saw the memo that came out. I'm hopeful that in the future, this, this budget can be ameliorated just a little bit to open our pools longer. Obviously, climate change is happening, we're seeing the effects. It's hotter later and earlier, and we are in need of these types of facilities for, for residents, for families, for people in need. So this is the, the type of, I hope, direction we move in for, for 2024. And again, just want to thank Dan Chenier's office and team, as well as your team, Mayor, and the seconder councillor, Troster, for working on this together.
Thank you, councillor Menard. So I'll, I'll open it up to... Thank you, councillor Menard. So I'll open it up to comments or questions about the motion and also about the Community Services Committee portion of the draft operating and capital budget. So it's open on anything on that, and then we'll move to voting on the motion and the different parts of the budget. Councillor Truster.
Thank you. First, I'll speak to the motion that I'm cosponsoring with councillor Menard. I cannot emphasize how important bathroom access is in the downtown core. One of the chief complaints, people are finding human waste in parks, in garden beds, in their front yard. It's inhumane. It is unsanitary. Public bathrooms are a necessity, and until we can roll out a comprehensive city public bathroom strategy, I don't think that two porta potties per ward is too much to ask for. And if any ward doesn't want them, give us a call because we really need them downtown. And also, yes, waiting pools are essential heat relief, especially for people in my ward who often don't have air conditioning or yards or balconies. And as councillor Menard mentioned, climate change is only accelerating, so it is crucially important. I just wanted to speak very briefly about the Community Services Budget in general. After a very long meeting that we had yesterday where we heard from more than 40 community delegates, I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're hearing. So, Mayor, I appreciate the upfront commitment in this budget to not cut frontline services, and I'm very happy that we're honoring that commitment. But I think we also need to discuss the difference between eliminating a program and a functional cut. And what we're hearing from so many of our community partners is the need is higher and their dollars aren't going as far. I know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that, for example, the rate of food inflation is something that we don't necessarily have to deal with as much as a city, but the agencies we fund need to do that. So, you know, we heard from, at the committee yesterday, from the Ottawa Food Bank that there were more than 400,000 food bank visits in 2022. That's a, and there was a 35% increase in usage in January 2023 from 2022. We also had a scenario where a lot of organizations received funding throughout the pandemic to offer food security support that those communities came to rely on. And now the rate of food inflation is even higher, the rate of poverty is even higher, and the need is even higher. And that tap has been turned off. And now there are community agencies and people living in poverty who are missing out on those hot meals that that they were able to access on a regular basis. And one, just one example is a program called Cooking for a Cause through Parkdale Community Centre that supplied 2,000 to 3,000 hot meals per week, and it has now been eliminated. You know, things are bad right now. Our social service workers are burning out and vital programs are running on fumes. Not a week goes by in our office without a serious housing issue coming across our desk, evictions, lack of support, which creates dangerous, dangerous living situations. There are more than 8,000 people that go through our shelter system every year when we know it's cheaper and more effective to house people. It just requires upfront investment. So I'm very proud that thanks to the leadership of councillors Carr and King and Plante, yesterday at Community Services, we approved a roadmap to moving people out of overflow physical distancing shelters into permanent supportive housing, and I'm really confident that we're going to make this happen. But right now, the situation is untenable. The longer we delay fixing these problems, the more it's going to cost us to fix and the more damage that'll occur. So I just, I really want to thank staff for working closely with my office. We almost brought a couple of motions to secure small but key pieces of funding, but staff worked with us to help find options. You know, one program is a very vital program that offers showers to people experiencing homelessness in my neighborhood. So, you know, this is the kind of nuts and bolts, basic humanity, basic hygiene, basic public health stuff that we're dealing with. So I just want to thank colleagues on council and staff for the support through this budget cycle. And as per councillor Brockington's upcoming motion, I hope we can start this conversation much earlier for the 2024 budget. We're certainly intending to do a nuts and bolts examination of frontline services in our neighborhood to find out what is really meeting community needs because we always need more to meet the need. And these are not, these are not optional services. They're really essential for the survival of my neighbors in Somerset Ward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Truster. Councillor Dudas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question about the funding source. So I noted that in this budget, in this motion, it's it's pulling the money from the diesel fuel budget. There's a motion that is coming before us, put forward by councillor Brockington, that also pulls from the same source. So I just wanted to be clear, is there money for both if we choose to go that way? Or are we, is it an either or situation?
Mr. Mayor, yes, so as you're aware, we do edge our diesel contracts. And a little bit of a benefit of the budget being a little bit delayed this year, if there's such thing as a benefit in the delayed budget, we're able to go out and edge a bit more in the month of January. So that kind of gave us a little bit of capacity, spare capacity, to address the bigger component, which would be the transit motion, which will come shortly. And then just a little bit of residual because the citywide tax side of the equation, that diesel budget is much smaller, so that's why there's less funding there from that perspective. And you'll see more on the transit side.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. The only other question I have is, you know, I know the city, when they provide porta potties, they're doing that generally in summer months. Can you confirm that this will be available in the winter months? And I say that specifically because there is an amazing group in my ward. It actually overlaps, councillor Luloff runs into councillor Tierney's. It's the Ski Heritage East group. And they've been asking for facilities for their users for a while, but they only run in the winter. So I really, I want to support this motion, but I want to know that it's not just seasonally explicit.
Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that the porta potties can be installed year round as long as they're in an accessible location for servicing on a weekly basis, there'd be no issue with winter.
Wonderful. It might be cold to use during the winter, but I'm happy to know that it's available. So thank you very much. I will be supporting this motion. I'm very glad that it is coming forward today.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. Consigliere Plante?
Yeah, I just quickly wanted to do a direction to staff on the issue of the community, community safety and wellbeing plan, mental wellbeing priority. There were some concerns in my, in in Lower Town and in the Byward about the $435,000 PTSD clinic, the lack of community consultation especially. And as we heard yesterday, PTSD is an issue all around the city, not just in Byward Market or Lower Town, and is definitely not exclusive to that area of town. And so I was just talking with councillor Truster, and we were wondering if whoever is leading this initiative, I've never met them. I, they've never met with my office, and I just confirmed they've never emailed my office either. So I was wondering if we could do a direction to staff that they meet with us, myself and councillor Truster, to determine an appropriate location. I believe it would be best if they consulted. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as a, as a point of clarification on that. So part of that funding in 2022 and the work that the team did was to work with service providers and to work with the community and mental health practitioners to identify gaps in community around a variety of different things, both service gaps. And what came out was a need for mental health practitioners, community mental health practitioners in the community. That is out of the scope of the city in terms of being a funding that because it was really clinical resources. So part of the work was to do a proposal and to build that proposal. That work was done with Ottawa Inner City Health. That proposal was provided to the Ottawa Hospital, who is working with the Ontario Health Teams to look at then, how would that get funded? How would that be governed and what would that look like? So I think what I would recommend is that I direct yourself and councillor Truster to the Ottawa Hospital. I'm happy to make that connection around the supports and what that looks like and where they're proposing those be located.
But the, the, your, your memo here says there is city staff involved, correct?
Mr. Mayor, so city staff were involved in doing the assessment with the community, building the proposal, supporting around what is the entire community proposal? The money in the budget for 35 that is included in the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan in the 2023 budget is includes one social service staff who's going to do the service coordination across two priority areas, both in the Byward Market and in Centertown, as well as any supporting additional funding for any service gaps, hours, et cetera, that goes in the combination with the 367, 365, that is also for additional supports in the housing budget.
But would you, I think we can all agree, they should meet with the affected councillor to determine what is happening and how this is to go about, correct? You would agree that that's important?
Mr. Mayor, if the, if the budget is approved for the activities that are moving forward past the proposal work that we did in 2022, absolutely, we would be working with both ward councillors to ensure that they're included in understanding the gaps in the services that are needed in those communities and understanding the service coordination needs in those particular communities and developing a plan. Absolutely, we would be doing that in 2023.
But is, is this going to happen in the Byward and Lower Town like that is going to happen in those locations? This clinic is going up in the Byward Market?
Mr. Mayor, the proposal that was identified by Ottawa Inner City Health in the gap in mental health needs in the community was specific community mental health practitioners. I think the number was three. Where they're located and where they come from and how they're funded really is in the responsibility of the Ottawa Hospital, who's taken responsibility to govern those mental health practitioners and govern where the supports go. So at this point in time, the work that we did was to identify the gaps, make the links, find an opportunity for funding sources and put the appropriate governance in place. Now it would be up to them about where they would go. So again, I would direct you to the Ottawa Hospital and happy to make those connections with the team.
And then would you, would your team support looking at a location outside of the Byward Market in Lower Town? A permanent location? I'm assuming it's a, like, an actual clinic and that I'm wondering, would your team support, based on what we heard yesterday, putting this outside of the Byward Market in Lower Town?
Mr. Mayor, where it gets located and how it's actually located is the responsibility. I don't direct clinical mental health supports. That is the responsibility of the Ottawa Hospital. So they would be, they would be the ones determining where those specific resources would go and how they're governed and how they're managed. That wouldn't be the responsibility of the city.
Okay. Sorry, do I, do I still need a direction to staff, though, for you to make that connection?
I think, I think you've got a commitment to, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kavanaugh.
Thank you very much. I very much support this motion. There's been lobbies for many, many years from a group called Got to Go that has been lobbying about having public bathrooms available throughout the city. And with heat waves, beaches are a prime target because when there's a heat wave in May and it's happened and the, and the facilities are not open for bathrooms, it's a huge problem. And we're getting that more and more. That didn't happen in the past. It's happening now. So this is a good start. We have to look at bathrooms eventually available all year round in in public places. I think that's really, really important. But I support the the direction and I think we need to look at this as a philosophy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor De Rush.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting the the porta potty amendment and see how that goes. And I'm willing to support looking at, so the additional lifeguard hours for the the waiting pools. But as an interim measure, I appreciate the challenge that that is there. And I appreciate fully that people want to use these water facilities in the longer term. And in the newer communities, we've adopted the splash pads, right? Which gives the community that opportunity to to take advantage of it throughout the day. And we don't have this, what is becoming a colossal problem to to staff it with with lifeguards. And I can't imagine for one minute that these waiting pools pass any kind of green audit in terms of their impact on the environment. So I I'm hopeful, Mr. Chenier, that we're sort of on a path towards when they reach the point of renewal, that we're looking at the options that we would substitute with with some, some very nice splash pads, which I can assure you, both my kids and many other kids approve of them and like them very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, indeed, most of our waiting pools are approaching end of life if they haven't already reached. We have done a few conversions from waiting pools. We did one two summers ago, I believe. And with each one that comes up, we do enter into discussions with the councillor and the community in terms of what should be replaced, whether they would like to go with a splash pad as a, as an alternative that, as you note, does not have service hours and it provides different service, but longer, longer coverage.
I appreciate that. Again, I'll support it as a, as an interim measure. And I hope we're, we're going to continue on that path to come up with, I think, much more environmentally friendly structures and ones that are less costly to the taxpayer. And ultimately, it's the same level of service across the city of Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Rush. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And certainly I can appreciate, having sat through that same meeting as many others did yesterday. There was a lot of discussion about about the issue of of access to washrooms and and just the ability for people to to go about their day without having to to plan it around a washroom break. I've heard this in my community as well, and I would very much like to support this motion. But I just want to make sure that I clearly understand what do the financial implications of this mean? And I think I'm asking that question both from the perspective of this motion and the subsequent motion we're going to be receiving as well. If we were to not proceed with with this motion or with other motions, how is the city planning on using those kind of hedge diesel funds? Are we, are we robbing Peter to pay Paul, I guess is what I'm asking for? Or would this have a, an impact downstream on other programming that we could potentially be looking at? Just a bit of a question on the financing of it?
Mr. Mayor, so we're definitely not robbing Peter to pay Paul. Basically, as we started the budget process, we edge our contracts to the tune of 60% in the shorter term, and then we kind of deal with it more in the longer term. And what we found in the month of January is there was a little bit of pickup in the pricing of fuel. So we were able to edge a bit more, which gave us a little bit of capacity. So between this motion of 50K and then 356 on the transit side, we get about $406,000 of spare capacity, if you will. The transit one would be isolated to transit because that's their fuel, so we can't take that and reallocate to a city service. But again, on the tax side, that's where that 50K is being funded from.
Thank you very much for that answer, and I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Tierney.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for Dan Chenier. When COVID started, I'm very happy with this motion, by the way. When COVID started, we saw this increased cost, almost extortion for the cost of these go huts. And we actually ran out of money to be able to put them all out during that time. Has the market corrected or are the prices starting to fall? Because I even had to sponsor a local football group, the North Gloucester Giants, to be able to have them have a porta potty because they were so expensive and we couldn't afford to do it. So I'm just wondering, do you have enough budget for this? Because the price of those things is quite expensive up till last year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, indeed, the, we've seen a stabilization of the market. So the $33,000 that is in this motion is really based on about $100 a month per unit coming in, which is pretty well pre-pandemic crisis. We're, we're almost back there.
That's terrific news. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. By the way, I'm hoping there's money on the budget for light bulbs because there's been a little bit of flickering going on over here. Councillor Luloff?
Thank you very much. Just to, just to pick up on on Steph's questions regarding mental health funding. I just want to make sure that that other areas of the city are not lost in the conversation as well. I think that there's some partnerships to be had with with Mo4 and and other areas of the city. We heard at at ARAC last week that there seems to be a lack of 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 mental health help in rural areas across the city, too. So just, just hoping that we're not necessarily only concentrating on one area of the city that that we're looking for partnerships to be able to deliver mental health services across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And absolutely, I think what we're, what we're seeing, and we definitely saw it at the Community Services Committee yesterday, is, you know, mental health and struggles are across every municipality. And part of the first phase of the initiative that we're working with in 2023 with paramedic services is to expand that citywide, that response into the medical system. And those partners around the table that are looking at mental health and our mental health practitioners are looking at the overarching system having to respond in some way or understanding the needs across all geographic, geographic areas somehow. And also, I think that's a key piece of the advocacy campaign that has to also be a part is ensuring that Ottawa has its fair share of mental health supports from the appropriate ministries that actually fund mental health. from the appropriate ministries that actually fund mental health. And it's making the distinction between where it's municipalities responsibility and where is the responsibilities of other levels of government. So we're hoping that we do a concentrated effort and rural areas will be a key component as well of that.
Thank you so much. Really, really excellent work in that area. Do, do truly appreciate it. It seems that time and time again, our Ottawa Paramedic Service steps up to fill gaps that are left by other orders of government. Entirely impressed with, with the work that you're doing in conjunction with the Ottawa Paramedic Service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Luloff. Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to speak a little, I have a question rather about the, the porta potty motion from Councilors Menard and Troster. Much of the fun, actually the funding comes from, I think, savings that are achieved through fuel hedging, right? Are there any risks in terms of the program being put in jeopardy in the future when price, when fuel prices rise to the point where like that, that, that savings is lost?
Mr. Mayor, no. So this would be a base adjustment. So this base is now there. So this gives Dan the opportunity to continue on with that program.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. The feedback from grandparents, daycare providers, parents who talk about going to parks who don't have porta potty or washroom. And the second they arrive, one little one says, I have to go to the bathroom. And you've got to pack up and pull the wagon back. The second little toes touch splash pad water, they have to go to the washroom. And when we started to bring in the go huts in my first term of council, the feedback was unanimous, thank you. Thank you so much for making it more accessible for, to our family, to our childcare group. We can stay in the park longer. We want to keep people in our communities. These are the types of miniscule investment that have huge benefit to the community. And so I support this and appreciate the motion. Counselor Deroche talked about waiting pools, so that's off my list. I do want to ask, I didn't ask it yesterday, but there's no resource noted in the budget for Mooneys Bay Hill renovation or the next step. We are to get back a plan with at least options for consideration, I believe in Q3. I could be wrong on the timelines, but the budget is silent. So are, are we in a wait and see approach? And then we would maybe consider something in 2024? What's the, the thinking along that?
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's correct. We are in a study and determined costs. What we will have by the end of this year is what council directed us to come back with, which, which are some options and the costs for them. In the absence of actually having any specific costs, there is nothing in here. The work that we are doing this year is being funded internally by the department.
Okay, thank you. Yesterday I asked about park amenity renewal and how that gets planned for in the budget. And I asked, I had to ask my question a few times, but Ms. Johns confirmed that critical components within parks are prioritized and money is set aside. My observation is particularly in parks in my ward and as I visit other parks that are older is they look older, that amenities are worn out. And while they may not be at the condition of they're unsafe for the public to, to use, it does send a message when amenities are worn out, dated, the, the park sign, all the paint has peeled off and it looks like it's past its best before date. So I want to know, I guess from a financial strategy point of view, as our parks age, is there an exponential increase in the funding that we're allocating to recognize? Like any other asset, as it gets older, you have to put more resources into it. Is that keeping pace? When I speak to people in infrastructure renewal, they say that our allocation is not matching the need, that there is in fact a deficit, a renewal deficit. Although again, we heard yesterday that critical components are being addressed. I just want to make sure that again, as time goes on, as, as our parks infrastructure ages, that there is an exponential increase to the funding for this budget line.
Mr. Mayor, so the answer is yes. So we basically fund as per the long range financial plan for tax. So we've been increasing that budget year over year, significant increases again this year. We're, we committed to closing that gap by 2026. So that's the overall funding gap that was done in 2017. We will be coming back this term in 2024, 2025 timeframe with revised versions of that at more detailed lever, levels due to the AMPs, Mr. Province's legislative municipalities to bring forward. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm. We have strategy in, in some of my parks where rather than renew the whole playground or park, we'll do components. So this year we'll replace the swing set and maybe three years from now we'll do the slide. And even though everything else has come to the end of its life cycle, it's not in a critical state. So we're going to postpone that work. And we're going to impact the community multiple times over a decade by closing the park or portions of the park off. And it just seems to me that if you've accrued the money to replace the asset, it would be in everyone's best interest to replace the amenities all at once as opposed to doing it piecemeal. I get the safety component. I would never push back on fixing or repairing an amenity that is broken or, or unsafe. But it's a bit of a head scratcher for some of my older parks where we're doing amenity replacement and it's like a 10-year plan or a 12-year plan when I think we should be doing it all at once. Finally, my last question is just about the coyote management strategy. Again, this is not just a River Ward question. Coyotes are active and, and engaged across the city. And there's a commitment, a council-directed commitment to have a more fulsome management strategy. Can we talk to the budget, how the budget addresses the need for greater citywide education campaign resources? What are we going to see by the end of this year?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take that question. While EPS is involved with bylaw enforcement of that initiative, I believe it falls under either the Environmental Committee or the Planning Committee, the Coyote Study.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would, that would fall under Environment Committee.
Could you please repeat the question?
Yeah.
So a, a, a revised management strategy with respect to coyotes is pending for later this year. And I'm just seeking confirmation that the budget that is allocated is sufficient to ensure that there's a fulsome public outreach and it covers off everything that needs to be covered off.
Yes, thanks for repeating the question. Yes, in terms of a budget need, we have what we need to respond and come back with that revised strategy.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, on that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Are there any other comments or questions? Either on Counselor Menard's porta potty motion, as it was referred to, or, or the rest of the Community and Community Services Committee draft operating in capital budgets? Okay, so first on the motion, is the motion carried?
Carried.
Okay. On item 8A, Counselor King, I believe that's where you have a, an interest, is item 8A Recreation Cultural and Facility Services, Community Recreation Culture and Sports Programs, Community Recreation and Cultural Programs. Is that carried? Item B and C, I believe Counselor Curry has the, an interest on those. Item B Recreation Cultural and Facility Services Complexes Aquatics and Specialized Services Operating Resource Requirement, Citywide Programs Aquatics and Specialized Services. Is that carried? Item C Community and Social Services Department, Children's Services Operating Resource Requirement, Special Needs Resourcing Under Legislative Programs and Municipal Investments. Is that carried? Item D, the remaining Community Services Committee Draft Operating Budget. Is that carried?
I'd like to register dissent.
Okay.
On the, the, sorry, the Community Safety and Wellbeing, the 1A.
Sorry, which one?
The Community Safety and Wellbeing Policy, 1A.
Okay, within item D on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the item was 1A on the Community Services Committee Budget Roadmap. In this case, it would be under 8D, Community Services and Social Services, General Manager's Office, Business Support Services and Community Safety Wellbeing Policy and Analytics Operating Resource Requirement.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8E Community Services Committee Draft Capital Budget. Is that carried? Thank you, everyone. Item nine, the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee portion of the 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets, which is separated into three sections, including item A on which Counselor Luloff has declared an interest. Are there any questions on any of this? Counselor Leeper.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a question, just a thanks very much to our bylaw folks for having heard the message we sent at the EPPS with respect to dogs and park enforcement. We can look forward to some increased enforcement as a result of some of that discussion for which I, the residents of Kitchi Sippi are grateful. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Leeper. Any other questions or comments? So item 9A, is that carried? Item 9B is the remaining EPPS Draft Operating Budget. Is that carried? Item 9C is the EPPS Draft Capital Budget. Is that carried? Okay, thank you. Item 10, the Planning and Housing Committee portion of the 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. There is a motion from Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I read it in and then say something? Okay, thank you very much. So whereas, do I read the, all of them? All of them?
It's up to you. You can.
Okay, let's, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I'll just, I hadn't got this far. I'll read all of them. Sorry, guys. Okay, so whereas all city-owned real property is a corporate asset, not an asset of any individual department or ward. And whereas revenue accrued from the disposal of any city-owned real property shall be deposited to the sale of surplus land account. And whereas the current sale of surplus land account budget is 1.5 million. And whereas the forecast for the sale of surplus land is projected to be 2.5 million for 2023. Whereas the 15 million annual contribution to municipal investment in affordable housing account 910954 excludes the forecasted 6.33 capital inflation, 6.33% capital inflation for 2023. Whereas the capital inflation for the housing contribution based on 6.33% equates to approximately $950,000. And whereas the city is committed to accelerating its planned 2025 Long Range Financial Plan update for housing services to be completed in advance of the 2024 budget process. And whereas it would be desirable for the municipal investment in an affordable housing account to be increased prior to that Long Range Financial Plan update, therefore be it resolved that the sale of surplus land account budget be increased by 1 million to 2.5 million. And be it further resolved that the increase in revenue from the sale of surplus land account be allocated to the municipal investment in affordable housing account 910954. Yes, I know it will be carried, but I just want to say one thing. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to the mayor for working with me probably over the last four weeks to get here. I think there was an acknowledgement from all staff at the Planning and Housing Committee that the current budget for affordable housing capital at 15 million was not adequate. And there was a, a whole willingness to accelerate that long range financial plan, but that the budget in front of us was based on the previous long range financial plan and that's why it was 15 million. So this motion identifies an additional $950,000 to be put towards projects that are already currently in the pipeline. And that's what's really essential about this. We have nonprofit housing partners who are doing their best to make ends meet, to help us with our affordable housing crisis. And so I think that this addition is a fair and reasonable interim measure to ensure that they can advance their strategic priorities as we advance ours. And so that, that is critical for us. And I know that I'll look forward to 2024 when we will all be working on our strategic priorities and, and allocating a budget that will support those priorities. So thank you very much to my colleagues and to Mr. Mayor for, for getting us here.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So I'll open it up to comments or questions about the motion and about the Planning and Housing Committee portion of the Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. So wherever you'd like to go, Counselor Troster.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I wanted to recognize Counselor Johnson and the mayor's office for this work. I think it's incredibly important. But I will say that the community housing providers and agencies and shelters that came to Planning and Housing Committee were asking for an increase of a minimum of $5 million. But I do think it's a big stat that at least this additional money will cover the rate of construction inflation. I, I don't think that's insignificant. I do think it's very important. And, you know, we have 20,000, sorry, we have 12,000 people on the waitlist for affordable housing in our city. I think we all agree we need to massively scale up our investment in affordable housing. And I hope that this is a sign of things to come because I'd like to see this budget doubled next year. But we'll get there. Thanks for getting us to this point though, Counselor Johnson and Mayor Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Counselor Troster. Counselor Kavanaugh.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you to my colleague for putting this motion forward and all the hard work and including others that have been involved. I'm very happy with it, both as a counselor and as Chair of Ottawa Community Housing, who is a major partner with the city on creating more affordable housing. And I, just a reminder that this is a start, this should be treated as a start, this should not be considered, okay, we're there. And also we need to continue to push and lobby, if I may say, our, our partners, both federally and provincially, to continue to support affordable housing. We can't do it on our own. This is just a, a small amount really in terms of what it costs. And I, I hope we continue to do that. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. I'll add my own expression of gratitude to Counselor Johnson for initiating this and working closely with me and with my office on moving this forward. And as Counselor Kavanaugh just said, I think it is just a start. And it is important that we are working with other levels of government and leveraging whatever investment we're making in affordable housing going forward to, to capitalize on other initiatives like the Rapid Housing Initiative and others. And also to look at where city land can be used to build affordable housing going forward. So we will have a lot more work to do on this issue in the weeks ahead. I, I expect it will be a big part of our discussions around the term of council priorities. So I look forward to working with everyone on that. Are there any other comments or questions on the motion or on the Planning and Housing Committee portion of the budget? Okay, is the motion carried?
Just with the dissent on, I'm very grateful for the motion, but still I'm just, I'm dissenting on, I believe, item 10B, the Planning and Housing Committee Draft Capital Budget. Very grateful for the motion.
But you're not dissenting on the motion?
No, definitely not.
Okay. Okay, so on the remainder of the budget, so item 10A, 1 and 2, and item 10B, is that carried? Any other dissents on either 10A or 10B? Okay, thank you. Let's move to item 11, the Transit Commission portion of the 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. And we have a couple of motions here, starting with a motion from Counselor Brockington. Counselor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking for my copy here. I know. If staff could just put it on the screen. Oh, this is the free fairs for children?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So the bulk of this motion, Mayor, I read into the record and we voted at Transit Commission earlier last month. I appreciated my colleague's support to pass the motion and give me some homework to look for a funding source. And this is what the motion is before us today about. There are two components of free fairs that had to be addressed. One was the zero to seven-year-olds, sorry, the six and seven-year-olds that we provided free fare to as of last year. That had to have a funding source identified from 2023 and going forward. And then the new piece are the children who are aged eight to 12, also comes with a cost. So my appreciation to staff who looked at this matter and came up with the suggestion of the hedging contract. of the hedging contract savings in diesel fuel, which provides an offset and which can be carried forward at that point. So I'll just read the therefore clause, excuse me, that transit fares for children aged eight to 12 shall become free of charge and go into effect on July 1st, 2023, and that fares for children aged zero to seven continue as well into 2023, and that both fares on an ongoing basis and the 356,000 budget pressure be funded by a 356,000 reduction in the transit services diesel fuel budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. So there's another motion. I'm just going to introduce the motions, and then we can all have discussion about the motions and about the Transit Commission portion of the budget. So there's a motion from councillor King.
Thank you, your worship, and I'm introducing a motion concerning the reinstatement of bus service to Wateridge Village. That's a new community on the former Rockliff Air Force Base, where many residents have contacted me, especially those who work in the public service, who have children, and who want to take transit downtown and to shop. So this is representative of their concerns, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to assess the financial feasibility of restoring peak period, peak direction transit service to Wateridge Village based on the current population, current and future rates of transit ridership, and funding availability within the approved 2023 transit operating budget, and be it further resolved that staff work with the ward councillor to confirm the financial feasibility of the proposed new service and subsequently to confirm implementation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King, and councillor Carr, I believe, has a motion as well?
Yes, hi, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I don't normally like to do things on the fly, but had a lot of interest in the past 24 hours about the scaffolding at Hurdman Station. I'm going to first acknowledge that the station is actually inside councillor Menard's ward, but just barely, and I tend to take ownership of it, much as he seems to take ownership of all four corners of Bankin Riverside. So I will just briefly, the scaffolding at Hurdman Station was designed to be temporary. It's not the best looking in the world, but it certainly is the only thing that provides any protection from the elements, and if you've got a long trek down to the 44, like I do, it's really needed. I know that there's been a permanent solution asked, but I'd like us to look at extending the temporary solution. So my motion is that therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to retain the temporary scaffolding at Hurdman Station in place until April 30th, 2023, and that staff be authorized to pay the cost from any existing capital works in progress, and be it further resolved that staff report back to Transit Commission with suggested improvements to Hurdman Station and Tunnies Pasture Station, including permanent sheltering and the capital costs associated with those improvements in advance of winter 2023.
Thank you, councillor Carr. So I'll open it up now to questions or comments on the three motions or any part of the Transit Commission portion of the budget. Conseilleur Plante?
I would like to come back to the rates for children. It might be a technical question. How can we see if someone is age, I mean, fits in that group? My son is young, but he's very tall. He looks like an adolescent, but he's not a teenager yet. So what sometime, how can you identify an eight-year-old without an ID? Actually, the bus operator will look at the person. It is clear that at 12 years old, you can look like a 15, but you can also look like a seven-year-old. But for right now, we don't have any other solutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I support all three motions that have been tabled today. Appreciate movers and secunders. On the free transit motion, a couple of just observations, I guess. One is that the city of Ottawa has a U-Pass in the city, and so if you're in University of Ottawa, Carleton, Algonquin, St. Paul, you know, as of going to those universities and colleges, institutions, you've got transit at a lower overall fare because everyone pays into it, and this motion, I think, speaks to that in some ways, that we're trying to get lifelong users. The best way to do that is early transit ridership. And so I think this will encourage not only those 12 and unders, but the parents, the guardians of those children, to get on the bus, and we'll encourage them. I think we'll see, I think we'll see a savings as a result of this, to be honest. I think it's only about 87,000 for the eight to 12, so very, very cost efficient and fully supportive. The second piece of this motion, I'm glad we're not worried about saying fair free transit anymore. So it's been a welcome change this term, and appreciate the motion. I think we're allowed to say that again. I think OC Transport might even use that now. So, look, I do want to thank, in all seriousness, councillor Brockington for the work in this area. I know he had brought the motion previously around seven-year-olds and gradually kind of moving that up. I know ODSP is another big area that we might look at in the future, but wholeheartedly support the motion for a very, you know, cost-effective way of doing it. On the cost to purchase, or the councillor Carr motion, I did have some questions to staff about the scaffolding, and I guess the question is, we, you know, I had put forward a direction previously at Transit Commission to have staff report back on the capital cost and come back to Transit Commission. Do you anticipate a gap in that service that we offer right now, which is more important, I think, in the summertime than it is in the wintertime because of the shading, right? That transit station was not designed as well as it could be, I don't think, and I'm wondering, do you anticipate a gap in that service in the summer? And then the second question is around the cost to purchasing the scaffolding. I saw how much it costs to rent over that time. Could we not have purchased that scaffolding for a cheaper amount and owned it to have it in perpetuity until a more permanent solution could be found?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know the answer to that question because that just wasn't a question that came to us. It was always just go a little bit longer. If it's important, we can find out the answer to purchasing the scaffolding, but it might be more effective to purchase something that is properly suited and not a temporary installation.
I appreciate that, and then just in terms of the gap of service, so this goes to April 30th, 2023, do you participate in coming down at that time and us having a gap in that service for folks right when the warmer weather is starting?
Mr. Mayor, we'd follow the direction of council if the motion is to retain the scaffolding until the end of April, then that's when we'd be seeking to take it down, and, you know, we'd be continuing to work and see if we can get a more appropriate long-term solution in before the bad weather next year.
Just a comment, Mayor, that I think Hurdman versus Tunnies, that there is, I think, a greater need at Hurdman, certainly. I don't know if councillor Leeper would agree or not, but I think that when you go to both stations, the Hurdman Station, especially that D and E platform, that's a long walk there, the lack of shading throughout, and, you know, the protection from the elements, I think, should have been built in initially 10 years ago, but it wasn't, so we're dealing with it now. So just encourage staff to come up with a more permanent solution that's human-focused here and not based on percentage of ridership. All people that take transit are important, so whether it's 80% or 75% of ridership, we need to find a solution for those folks. So very much support the councillor Carr motion and just encourage staff to come back as early as possible with those capital funding requirements for a permanent solution for this in the future. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Lowe?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I want to speak on a, I want to share some concerns about councillor King's motion for Route 17 to be restored to Wateridge Village. I do want to note that currently there is an all-day route that runs in that village. Route 27 does go to Salem Ron Station, and I do believe it, in fact, runs all day. It runs midday as well. So like my, I don't want us to get into the details and nitty-gritty of the route planning because I'm sure every single one of us around the table here have routes that were suspended in June of 2021 that we want to bring back, service levels that we want to bring back. So this is not a motion that I want, that I'm going to support because it's, it probably opens the gates for all of us to, you know, I want 171 service in the weekend. I'm sure councillor Hill wants 275 back, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's just my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lowe. Speaking of councillor Hill, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our Transit Commission meeting, I dissented from the councillor Brockington motion with regard to the free transit for the youth. I just want to commit, I am 100% in favor of improving our ridership on our transit system. I want to seek the best options in order to get to that space. I think in the near term, I'd measure that over the next couple of years, I think the best mechanism to get there is twofold. One of them, it is improving our operational communications with transit riders, so that when somebody knows that their bus arrives at 7:02, they show up at the right time, the right place, and it arrives at the right time. That'll be the first piece. The second one would be in the subscription model that we're offering to folks, which I think is a bit outdated, just given the hybrid model that we're coming into these days. So I'm going to be moving forward over the next several months to work with the Transit Commission colleagues in order to advance those two pieces, which I think will improve the ridership and the service quality and the reliability of transit as we have it. But I did campaign that I'm not interested to see free transit at this point, and so as such, I will not be supporting that motion.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Troster?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I'm not a member of the Transit Commission, and so I was just wondering if either staff or a member of the commission could explain very succinctly how it's possible to cut $47 million from that budget without impacting service, because I know my office and many other offices have been receiving a lot of concerned emails about this, and I just think it would be useful, especially for the public who's watching, to understand how that's possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. There's several approaches that we took in building the budget for OC Transport to respond to the situation we find ourselves in with inflation, many inflationary costs, also with the substantial costs of opening the two new O-Train lines later this year. The first was to look very carefully at all aspects of our operating budget, and the biggest thing there was that we can reduce some of our bus maintenance costs by retiring from the fleet, some buses which are no longer used at current service levels. We were hanging on to those buses over the last couple of years because advice at that time was the economy is going to return to 100% by the end of whatever period of time, and we will need to return to full service levels. That's clearly not the case with the city's largest employer, the federal government, asking its employees to work onsite only half the time. The next thing we did was look very closely at our capital expenditures required in 2023, and especially those ones which are funded almost directly from the operating budget, and we found several things that we can do there. Some were to push planned expenditures later by a year so that they would line up with the current expected opening dates of the O-Train West extension. Some were to not ask for top-ups to some ongoing capital programs where we have enough money remaining in previous, previously approved works in progress because we've been taking a frugal approach to all of our expenditures since the pandemic began. Also, there's some subcapital costs that are no longer required with the retirement of those buses that we aren't using. We won't need the midlife rebuild for those buses. So combining all of these things allowed us to bring a budget which met the directions from council and budget directions report, and doesn't require any reductions to service.
Just a quick follow-up question, if that's okay? But is, are these cuts and is this budget predicated on the idea that service levels have already been cut back due to decreased demand?
Mr. Mayor, we had adjust the service base on the level of what we saw during the pandemic. Actually, the level of the service is very good for the amount of people who are taking transit, and as my colleague said, the reduction that we proposed today are only for this year, unfortunately. It's not recurrent, so we will continue to work with my partner, my colleagues, to be able to design other things to continue to have a good service, but with the lowest possible.
Okay, thank you very much. I think it's a chicken and egg thing because if you have low ridership, you might decrease service, but then the service becomes less reliable if there's less frequency. So this is something that I am seriously concerned about, and I hear constantly from residents who don't think they're getting good service from OC Transport, and I know you're all working very hard, but, you know, cutting, I'm very concerned about cuts to transit. I just want to ask one more question about the Hurdman temporary shelter. If there's no permanent solution by November for the scaffolding, can we pivot back to a temporary solution for the winter for next year?
Mr. Mayor, those scaffolding are very ugly, unfortunately, and we'll do our best to find a permanent fix and to not rely anymore on these rental.
Okay, thank you very much, and, you know, just, I really believe we need to build a city that works for people, and having shelter from the elements is a pretty, pretty key piece of making transit work for people in this city. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Just a quick follow-up on your earlier questions, the, we've, OC Transport found the $47 million inefficiencies, but the transit budget is actually going up this year compared to 2022, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
So effectively, the $47 million inefficiencies are being reinvested in public transit?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Thank you, councillor Troster. Councillor Leeper?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor, I'm going to be moving with councillor Brockington seconding. Correct? That the Carr motion with respect to directing staff to retain the scaffolding at Hurdman Station be amended to include Tunnies Pasture Station. I hadn't anticipated that we would be making this effort today, but if Hurdman is going to be retained, I need to insist that Tunnies is as well. I'll just, I'll read one representative note that I received this morning from Nancy, who is in Barhaven. "The scaffolding is unsightly and embarrassing as a fixture of Ottawa's LRT system, but it's absolutely necessary since it seems doubtful that anything more attractive will ever be installed. We do know Tunnies is temporary. Standing at Tunnies in the blistering sunshine of summer or the rainy seasons of spring and fall, not to mention the snow and freezing rain of our winters, is torturous enough as the shelters are so small and crowded in the busy hours of the day. If the scaffolding were to be removed, the weight at Tunnies Pasture would be unbearable in all of the weather elements we experience in Ottawa for so many transit users once inadequate bus shelters fill up." And I absolutely agree with Nancy. Those shelters are small, this is an extremely crowded station during peak hours, there is insufficient space in the shelter. It is about, I just did a quick drawing on Ottawa, it's about 200 meters from the exit from the station area to stop D, where folks wait for their buses for the south end. So I will be putting that amendment on the floor unless it's considered friendly by councillor Carr.
Is it possible to get a comment from staff first, or do I have to consider it?
I'm happy to move the.
I'm wondering if we can move it separately, sorry.
Okay, so we'll make that a separate amendment to the motion.
Yep.
So councillor Leeper, do you have a funding source for that additional expenditure?
It would also be funded out of the capital works in progress, the same funding source. So just the motion remains the same, and I think Caitlin probably has the sense of it, to modify the language in the first be it resolved that says Hurdman Station, to read Hurdman and Tunnies Pasture Stations, and the funding source will remain the same.
So I'm sure other councillors will have questions about that, but I guess the first, I'll just ask on behalf of everyone, probably, what is, what would that cost to continue to provide the shelter at Tunnies Pasture, and do we have the funds to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I see my colleague Pat is looking up, do you have the number there? File number?
Mr. Mayor, do you need a calculator?
Between the two stations, it would be for four months, so one-third of the year. That would come out to about $230,000 for the year for both stations combined.
In comparison to?
We were, the Herdman Station installation is smaller. And so it would have been, it would have been less than half of that. It would have been in the $50,000, $80,000 range. Now, you know, we don't know what, we don't know what the rental rates are. This isn't a regulated market, so it's whatever our current supplier would charge us. So, Mr. Mayor, I guess effectively what this does is it adds about $160,000 or so requirement more for transit to find through their existing capital works in progress program to find that funding. I caution taking any more risks, but I'll look to my colleagues that I'll support them to do the best that we can, given that, you know, you can't allow us to one kid and not give allowance to another kid in this scenario. So I'm supportive of supporting you with having both there, if that's what the decision is.
So can I ask for an opinion from OC Transpo on whether it's as important and as helpful to maintain the scaffolding at Tunnies Pasture as it is at Herdman Station, particularly given that it's more expensive to do so at Tunnies Pasture?
Mr. Mayor, to be fair with the customers, I think we could take the risk to include the both. But the thing is, we have to make sure that in April, we won't have another motion that forces us to continue to keep those scaffolding in place.
So you're saying you'd be able to do it till April 30th, and that would be it?
Up to April.
Okay. Okay, so let's carry on hearing from people about the, sorry, go ahead, Councillor Leaper?
No, I'm sorry, were you speaking?
Oh, yeah, no, I was just going to say, let's continue to hear from people about the three original motions, Councillor Leaper's motion, and anything else to do with the Transit Commission budget.
Thank you. Just, I would say thank you very much to the answers for OC Transpo. I think it is an equity issue between the folks who are using the different stations across the city.
So I just want to maintain the order. We've got, there's other people already.
I'm just wondering if I could ask a question of clarification, which I think may help because I don't understand the answer we just received. Are the resources that we're debating not to cover a 12-month calendar year or just seasonal? I just need that clarification.
So my understanding is the motion from Councillor Carr was to maintain the scaffolding until April 30th. Is that not how it's worded? And that staff will come back with suggested improvements? So do you want to speak to that, Councillor Carr, or do you want staff to speak to that?
I think it's best if staff speak to it, but my understanding was that the scaffolding, we were going to make sure that it could stay up through the rainy weather until April 30th. We may not be able to have it throughout the summer, but you're looking for going to come back with costing on a more permanent solution.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So to be clear, the scaffolding would remain in place until April 30th? And then there would be, there would be work done to see if it's possible to, or what it would cost to improve it later on and have it back later on. So, okay. Councillor Gower?
Thank you. Just a quick thoughts on the motion and the overall budget. On Councillor Brockington's motion, I'm glad, I'm glad this is being introduced and suggested. I think it's a great initiative and puts us on par with most of the other major Canadian cities. On the car motion and subsequently the Leaper motion, thank you for introducing those as well. I do think the situation's different at Herdman versus Tunnies. I think it is worse at Herdman. Tunnies does have quite a large concourse station. If we were looking at this today and saying, should we, you know, we did not have any scaffolding. And this was in front of us, saying, should we invest $700,000 a year in new scaffolding? I think this council would have a hard time approving that when you think of where that money could be invested elsewhere. I mean, think of all the porta-potties you can rent with $700,000. It's a lot of money for temporary scaffolding. So I'm glad we also have as part of this, a commitment from staff to look at a more permanent solution that'll address the issues at Herdman Station and Tunnies as well. On King's motion, I won't vote against it, but just reminding all councillors, if you have ideas about routes, staff are always willing to have a look at that. I have a Route 61 in my ward that we want to improve to provide better access for employees of long-term care homes, and staff is doing some research on that. So we don't always need motions for these. Staff can help you look into that. I think the big question mark in the budget is about that $39 million that we're crossing our fingers on to get from the provincial government. But on that, I'd point out Toronto has asked for $367 million. They're in much the same boat as us in terms of reduced ridership. So I think $39 million is a pretty modest ask. Montreal has asked their provincial government for $82 million. So this is a problem that many cities are facing, and I think it's realistic for us to look on to other levels of government. Some cities in Canada are lucky. Their provincial governments provide them with dedicated funding year after year after year, not just in spite of pandemic. So I don't think $39 million is an unreasonable request to make to the provincial government, given how essential transit is to our community. And my last thought is, we can't reiterate enough. The operations line of this budget is 5% higher than it was in 2022, $27.5 million more. That's a 5% increase towards operations. It'll allow the OC Transpo team to hire the equivalent of 112 full-time equivalents. That includes a lot of new drivers to address reliability. So our job as council is to make sure OC Transpo is funded so they can deliver the level of service that we've been asking for, and this budget does that. So I will support it, and I hope councillors will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gower. Councillor Kitz?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I agree a lot with a lot of what Councillor Gower just said. And with Councillor Lowe's comments regarding the King motion. I might be sounding like a bit of a broken record today, but it feels like we're prioritizing one route over others. And some of you may know, I've been loudly championing the reinstatement of an express route from the Chapel Hill South Park and Ride. It's the 225, I'm sure Councillor Lowe knew that. So I just, to be pointed about it and to get some clarity from staff, is a motion like this necessary in order to explore the feasibility of reinstating a route?
Mr. Mayor, we don't need any motion to do so because this is our job to review very frequently. And we are conducting actually a review, a route review. And we'll consult for sure all councillors and residents. We'll ask our bus drivers that are dealing with the route every day. So we'll do that and we'll update the Transit Commission frequently on that.
Thank you. And we have been having some, I have been having some good chats with staff about that route in particular. So I appreciate that. And again, just for clarity, if this motion passes, it doesn't mean that it's going to be prioritized over other routes. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. No prioritize because we receive a motion or not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarity. Again, I will be dissenting on this motion just because I don't want the appearance that one route is being prioritized over other routes when we all have, you know, challenges in our own wards. But happy to support the other motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kitz. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I support the motions going forward. I do realize that we're all going to have routes that we're going to be concerned about. And I hope that that's more of a collective conversation. It's going to be a difficult one. And my question is, my concern is that that we're setting ourselves up that this budget is already pre-cut, you know, routes, and that it's counting on cuts. And we're okaying that today. So please give me some clarification on that because we're having the budget now, but we're going to discuss. Let's face it, there are probably going to be route cuts. I don't think there'll be expansions very much anyway. So please clarify how that works within the budget.
Mr. Mayor, merci pour votre question comme cela.
Thank you for your question, councillor. We'll be reviewing the routes. It doesn't mean we're going to cut any. We're going to try to optimize. That's the word to be used here. Let's not forget that we'll open lines two and four at the end of the fall, at the end of the summer, rather, in the beginning of fall of this year. And we also have in the eastern part, the construction of Line 1, which should open toward the end of 2024. So those are all the uses that we're going to be looking at. And what we will favor most of all are locations where there are no need for service anymore. We will reallocate the routes to another area. We'll leave no one behind. That's why that in the Transit Commission, we will try and aim at developing a level of service that will meet the needs of not necessarily large buses because transit is not only with buses for 40 to 60 people.
What you're saying is it's going to be lined up with that opening of Stage 2, the changes. Which means that, well, the part that is going to be opening anyway, because it's not going to be opening in the west. We know that. It's 17 months behind. It's going to be at the earliest 2026. So would that mean that there would be no route changes in that area for the west end?
Mr. Mayor, there's lines two and four of Trillium that will open this year. So that's a good opportunity. There's also some behaviors that definitely change with our users because of the pandemic, unfortunately, as we know. So we want to see where our clients need more services. Maybe there are places where they don't really need the service and they're depriving other areas of the city. So we already have a team working on this. And as I said earlier, we will come to the Transit Commission regularly for updates.
I'm around, but I'll be attending when I can. When I was, I had two motions that seemed to be very relevant. I did have a motion about GPS reliability, and I moved that, I believe in 2019, about having more reliable service through apps to know when your bus is coming. And I'd like an update on that, please.
Mr. Mayor, we're continuing to make improvements in the real-time information that we provide to customers or that we make available to the various app developers who publish that information. Included in this budget is spending that will allow us to continue on that work. And we are looking forward to bringing a presentation to the Transit Commission early in the year, showing where we have been, where we are now, and where we're going to on this continuous improvement process.
Thank you very much. And I realize the pandemic got in the way, but because we were looking for service changes, we were looking for an update in 2020, but we'll take it. And the other thing that I had moved way back at the beginning of the pandemic was to to move a motion to write to the federal government about operational funding for our services because we saw immediately the cut in ridership. And so I just want to remind everyone that we need to continue to have that message that this should be funded in terms of climate change, that operational funding should be a responsibility of all governments and not be put on the burdens of municipalities where it costs effective service. So I appreciate that. Again, I want to thank Councillor Brockington on the motion on free trips for kids. If I can say that, I can see grandparents on Wednesdays and Sundays getting the kids. And the parents are still at home, of course, because they're still working and they're not using the services. But the kids and the grandparents will probably be doing it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I will be voting against the budget, Renee. And I want to express to you and to Pat that this is not a lack of confidence in what you can do. This is my signal that we need to do better. And for the people of College Ward who want to use transit, they are looking forward to it being a reliable service for them. But as it stands, given the constraints that I believe this budget puts on your team, we won't be able to do so. I appreciate that the operating budget is increasing by a certain percentage, but your costs are increasing as well. You're adding two new lines for the LRT, which is very exciting. But my concern remains with conventional bus service. And so I'll look forward to attending Transit Commission meetings in the future so that we can talk about some of the programs that I know you're working on to address those needs. I have Bell's Corners in my ward. Bell's Corners is, you know, the connectivity to Bell's Corners is really tricky. And we did see service cuts during the pandemic to that area. And for them to get to the new LRT, they actually have to go over the Queen's Way to get there. So we're going to have to give them the incentive to change their behavior. They're going to have, they're going to pass where they can get on the Queen's Way with their car on a bus to get to where the LRT is going to go. I mean, that's not going to be an easy sell for a lot of individuals there. And so we need to invest in the conventional bus delivery now so that those behaviors can become in place. People are buying cars now in order to address this. I have students at Algonquin College who share programs with Carleton University. They have to go between the two campuses in order to complete their programs. And the connectivity between Algonquin and other institutions is extremely challenging. And I just, I believe that, you know, when speaking with Pat, like you, OC Transpo, I believe, is one of the few departments, one of the few departments where if we give them more, they can do more. If we give them more, they can try and get that chicken before the egg, if I may. They can put the routes out and see what the uptake is. If we continue to create a situation where the ridership has to show evidence for the routes, then we will not be able to get the data we need to make better informed decisions. And so my dissenting on this budget is not a lack of confidence in your leadership. It is the understanding that I don't think in 2023, as it's currently built, we're going to be able to get there for the residents of College Ward. This budget does just not give staff the tools that they need to give citizens the transit they deserve. With these two motions with respect to the scaffolding, I think actually this is the closest Peter-to-pay-Paul situation that we've had so far. Because we're actually asking transit to take within their own budget to be able to pay for scaffolding for basic element shades. That is a really sad situation. So I don't envy your position. I respect you all immensely. But I don't believe that the current 2.5 levy is going to be able to adequately meet the needs of College Ward and residents for OC Transpo. I also just want to point out that at the budget consultation that we held on February 16th with my neighbors here, we asked a couple of questions from our residents. Transit was rated, we asked two questions. What was the department that gave you the best value for money? Transit rated the least, so the worst value for money. But what was the biggest bang for your buck? People believed it was transit. People wanted investment in transit. And so again, I think that people are ready to come the distance with us if we're ready to go the distance with them.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Councillor Lowe?
Ready, okay. Thanks, Mayor. A question about the scaffolding motions, I guess. This is a motion just to extend this year's scaffolding to the 30th of April and then telling staff to look for a permanent solution for next winter, correct? I guess, yeah.
Thank you for the question. We're looking to retain the temporary scaffolding until April 30th.
We're looking to retain the temporary scaffolding until April 30th and hoping that we can have a report back on options before then. But I understand that perhaps we may not have it in the summer. But I'm certainly hoping that by the second clause, that we'll have an idea of what a permanent solution could look like and the costs associated with it, and we can have a discussion before the winter season.
Thank you. And do staff perceive that discussion and then the whole process of procuring a, procuring and then securing funding for a permanent solution? Do you foresee that being able to take place before the 2024 budget?
Mister Mayor, we will, we have started that work already. It was work that was directed to us at the last Transit Commission meeting. And we hope to have our conclusions and feasibility mapped out as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Lowe. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. My question is with regard to the scaffold motion as well as amended. I see this as a risk management exercise in terms of identifying the health and safety issues for our transit riders versus the budgetary pressures that we'll face by looking at this increased cost. And I guess my question is, do we have any statistics or any data that we can use to identify, you know, the risks to our transit riders as from, whether it's a heat stroke or a health hazards perspective of not having these in place? And then from there, perhaps we can better make a decision based on the cost? Because to me, I really want to get an appreciation for what are the health and safety risks that we're looking at? And if we can afford to mitigate them, I'd like to do so. But I just would like to get an appreciation if we have an understanding of that data.
Well, there's no health and safety issue linked to these shelters. Even if I wasn't here at the time, when the train was deployed, there were issues linked to the train. And ridership was very, very high at that time. Many people were inside the station at one time, and many people had to wait outside. This is why we decided to set up these temporary shelters. We know what happened, unfortunately. In March 2020, the pandemic struck. Ridership went down considerably. Without boasting, we're working with our partners to reduce breakdowns. So there are fewer people who have to wait outside because people can now wait inside the station because there are more trains. Now, we hope that ridership will pick up in the future, that people will be able to wait inside the station because there'll be fewer breakdowns. Now, what we're doing, what we're intending to do is to see whether we can create a permanent structure, a permanent system. But because, well, in the past, we decided to build this scaffolding for the reasons that we have set out. But we don't think it's necessary today. But OC Transport, we think, will be able to come up with a permanent solution. And we won't be required to pay rental on a yearly basis. Thank you.
Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. When we first opened the LRT, we immediately heard from passengers about their experience at Tunnies, at Herdman, and at Blair in particular. And what passengers said was they were exposed to the elements, and they were quite concerned that despite not the most longest walk in the world, getting from one LRT stop to their local bus stop, which would then take them onto their connection, was exposing them to all elements. So that's why we have the temporary solutions that we have now. But if you think you've been getting emails lately on pick your topic when these temporary structures are taken away, we're going to go right back to the volume of complaints that people had brought to our attention when LRT first opened. So I definitely support looking for a solution to protect passengers. And we frankly need a long-term solution. So my question for the treasurer is, is there any money in the contingency budget for the LRT project that could fund a permanent solution at these stations?
Mister Mayor, no.
All right, short and sweet. I do appreciate, again, like the motions on the floor here and the fact that we're asking for a report on some options going forward. So let me explain the three areas that caused me the greatest concern with the Transit Commission budget. One is bus reliability. Obviously, there are three portions of public trends in the city, LRT, bus, and paratransport. And we have areas of improvement in all three. The bus reliability is a big concern for me because of our reliance on shuttling people from their local communities to get to a transit station, transitway station or LRT station. And if that leg is not functionable, not reliable, then our ability to grow transit over time just isn't there. We had a long-term financial plan for transit, which we approved before LRT Phase One opened, that looked at exponential growth over time, that we wanted to attract more riders year after year, which in turn would bring in more revenues, which would help with our financial situation. The GM, to her credit, has identified FTEs as a major issue causing reliability issue. And we're providing more FTEs in this budget, which is very good. And Mr. Scrimger at Transit Commission stated that a number of bus routes, their schedules are being reviewed for realistic times on those routes. And he listed about a dozen off the top of a head, off of his head. So I appreciate that, because I do believe those two are contributing to reliability issues. Not the whole picture, but certainly a good proportion. We heard from the GM that on a bad day, the number of bus run cancellations could hit 400, which is significant when you look at what a bus's capacity is along a route. The number of people impacted a normal is about 80. We get reliability performance percentages every month, 97%, 98%. The GM's goal is 99.5. And I do want to be able to see and track the number of daily run cancellations that happen, because I think that metric is very important as well. The second component I'm concerned about is the projected deficit. And I just wanted clarification from the city treasurer again, what that number is. What are we projecting as our deficit before an upper level of government offset?
Mister Mayor, just for clarity, are you referring to 2022 or what we have in the 2023 budget?
This current budget for this year.
Current budget, we have $39 million there that we need to receive from upper levels of government.
That's the offset we're looking for. But I thought our projected deficit before an offset was in the 50 million range. Is that not correct?
No, the net that we need from upper tiers, 39 million.
Okay. And are we expected that that entire offset will be provided?
Mister Mayor, with 100% confidence, I can't say yes. I mean, the reality is, as Chair Gower said, the other municipalities across Ontario are in similar situations, asking for significantly more. So until we have something firm commitment from our partners above us, I can't commit to that.
In 2022, we anticipated or projected quite a substantial deficit. We believe we were going to be receiving an offset. We received a majority of that offset, but not the full amount. What is our plan to offset any difference between the full project deficit and a number less than that that we receive from an upper level of government? What's our plan to cover off the rest?
So Mister Mayor, you're correct. We did have a good commitment that we received 63 million back in November, December timeframe. In that letter from our partners above us, there was mentioned that municipalities could have the opportunity to go back this year to subsidize or find a remaining deficit for 2022. The projection right now for 2022 is around a 2022, $24 million deficit. Obviously, you know, our mitigations are, we go to our reserves first. Then from there, we'd have to go into more capital cuts to kind of find the funding. And obviously, as a last reserve or last step would be, you know, service cuts or borrowing from other reserves as a final mitigation strategy.
And do we have any indication when in this calendar year we will have a more definite idea about the payment that we were going to receive?
Mister Mayor, my expectation would be, you know, sometime over the next month or two. The challenge we have, I guess a little of a challenge is our upper partners, provincial and federal. Their calendar year is March 31st. So they obviously need to go through their process and get all the submissions from the municipalities for what they required in 2022. From there, then you got to go through the process of they reach out, and then we'll resubmit and continue to advocate, see, obviously, the partners around this table will be required. But I'm hoping to have some sort of indication in the next month, six weeks, that we can go back and advocate for the gap for 2022. And hopefully, that opens up the discussion for 2023.
My last question at this time is, the ridership estimates for last budget year were way off. Can staff clarify the ridership numbers for 2023, particularly the average that we're not yet achieving? And what the goal or strategy is to get ridership to that point to fulfill our budget obligations?
Mayor, I'd like to remind you that last year, with the ridership forecast, that was before Omicron. Omicron played a huge or had a huge impact on the trend. This year, we've been much more conservative. We've looked at what's happening in similar cities. If you look at Europe, for example, they're back to 100% ridership levels for January. We had anticipated 65%. We're already at 62%. That's excellent. We know that federal employees are due to come back to work at the latest in April. That's good news for us. We've implemented initiatives and we're continuing to work on the campaign to get people back on the buses and the trains and to keep them there. You have to attract them, but you have to keep the ones you already have. Thank you for your support in this. And we're confident that of 70% is very reasonable and realistic.
Merci. Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Menard.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just on the overall transit budget and the piece, I believe it's 11A in the capital side that clerk's office identified for me. That's where my concern lies within this budget. I support other pieces of this budget around a fare freeze and a push to try to get more drivers hired to reduce the scheduling issues that we've been seeing. Support those pieces. But there's a large chunk as well that I have concerns about with previous reductions. And so I think it's important we recognize today that in 2020, we made fairly significant reductions because of the pandemic. But ridership was much lower than it is now. And the plan was to return transit service as we moved out of those pandemic restrictions, which we largely have now. In 2021, we made those cuts permanent. And so that goal of kind of bringing back service as we saw ridership gradually increase wasn't realized. And so, you know, I think I heard the argument was made earlier today about service in our wards, about, you know, what I consider to be an important innovation in policing that will deliver better outcomes. But the former mayor's argument was used that if you don't want, you know, more police resources in your ward, then that, you know, then you'll take them, right? Transfer them over to another ward. I find the argument disingenuous, but I guess by the same logic, you could say, look, if you're voting to continue these reductions in service, then I suppose I could say, we'll take that transit service. But I won't do that, because that's a parochial argument that we shouldn't be making around this table as far as I'm concerned and doesn't recognize the potential innovation that we're going to see. But those 2021 reductions translated to 2,170 fewer service hours per week and 70 fewer employees at the time. So routes from Wateridge, Beacon Hill, Orleans, Chapel Hill South, Bell's Corners, Kanata, Barhaven, and Manredale were all suspended at the time and are now suspended indefinitely as a result of the budget. In my own ward, the frequency reductions were implemented by many routes on the six, the seven, the 10, the 11, and the O train, line two replacement budgets, all which passed through many wards here. And so this is how we can say now that there's no service level cuts as a result of this budget, because we already made those significant cuts previously. But the difference is, when we made those reductions, our ridership was much lower than it is today. That's a fact, right? We're projecting, I think, is it 80% by the end of this year? 75 to 80%. And so when we made those reductions, though, we were at 45%. So we've had increases in ridership, but those service level reductions have been maintained. So that's my concern about when we get back up to 80%, 90%, like we say we want to and we're going to strive to get towards, the service won't be as consistent with what it was previously. And so I want to make sure we're leaving room for those enhancements. I hear there's some room for those enhancements going forward, but my concern is the reduction in that capital side budget without that reinvestment in our buses, our drivers, our service. So Mayor, I'll dissent on item 11A within the transit budget. I appreciate other items within this budget and the work of the GM and our staff. But on this piece, this is one that I, I'm concerned that the service that we're seeing, experiencing, we get emails about daily, is going to be tough to improve without some enhancements financially to do so. So Mayor, I appreciate you taking the time to hear me today, and I'll dissent on that 11A item.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Just to be clear, what ridership are we forecasting in 2023? And is it for the whole year? Or is it staggered, meaning it's expected to go up over the course of the year?
Mister Mayor, for the whole year, it will be 70, but we will need to increase monthly after month. So we projected 65 for January. We are now at 62. We expect things to reach our forecast for February and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. And what are you forecasting for the last quarter of the year or the last few months of 2023? Does anybody remember?
Mister Mayor, the profile through the year is based on starting the year at 65%, ending the year at 75%, for an average for the full year of 70%.
Great, thank you. Councillor Devine, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. It's interesting how much longer we're going to be here today than we had perhaps anticipated. And I think that what's that is telling me are two things. First of all, that we as councillors are all benefiting through from the very receptive and welcoming and collaborative tone that you have set for us, Mister Mayor, for which I am grateful and for which I think you deserve to be commended. It takes leadership to make space for this level of dissent, and I'm grateful for it. But the amount of time we're spending here today is also, for me, an indication that the draft budget that we have before us has gaps in it, whether in housing or mental health supports or transit or whatever else we might discover on pages four and five of our roadmap. And these gaps are showing that this budget might not be meeting the needs of the many, as many residents of our city as we had hoped for. With regards to transit, I am going to be dissenting on the transit budget. And I applaud what my councillor, my colleague councillor Johnson said, Madame Amelcar, that it's not a comment on your leadership. Transit reliability and specifically bus reliability in my ward was absolutely among the top three issues. And so I'm just, I'm not supporting the budget because I'm concerned that we are not doing enough to ensure that our public transit becomes the vital service that we need it to be at a critical time, when, in my opinion, and in the opinions of many in my ward, we should be doing everything we can to bring riders back. Our transit system has been hit with so many challenges lately, whether they be operational or technical or service or even reputational. And all of those challenges are making it very hard indeed to attract and retain new riders, which I believe should be our long-term focus. The issue of, it's interesting that the issue of scaffolding has come up. Um, and I'm grateful we're having the conversation of scaffolding. Uh, and that we might be making amendments to it. And I I I respect what um. What one of my colleagues was saying was that with regards to scaffolding and and how to solve that problem, that the problem of scaffolding at Herdman. Might be easier to solve because it's a smaller problem and therefore a cheaper problem to solve. Um, but for the riders, whether you're at Herdman or or Tunnies, it's the same challenge you're facing that. And I I have been a rider at Tunnies many times and it's extremely disincentivizing to stand there. It's a really long walk from Tunnies. To the end stations on the concourse that take you to Ward Nine. It's a very, very disincentivizing experience to be sitting there. And I'm not so much concerned about the risk and safety of standing out in the rain. I'm concerned about providing a lousy service for those customers. And losing those riders and it feels like our loss is Uber's gain. Um, so not only does it feel through this budget that we've accepted a diminished ridership, but that we're planning for it as if it's the new normal. That we've established a new baseline of diminished ridership. When we should be doing everything we can to come up with solutions such as. The uh the motion to to make fair transit free for people aged zero to twelve to incentivize new ridership. So for that reason. And for, you know, a lot of anticipation of what might come in future years, I'll be I'll be voting against this budget, but wishing um. You and your staff and OC Transpo the best for twenty twenty-four and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Divine. I appreciate that feedback. I I'm not uh sure that this meeting is going longer than I expected it to, but. But, you know. Yeah. It's it's. It's two twenty-six. Anyway, um, Councillor Brown, please.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor, and I have a question for Mister Rogers and I appreciated Councillor Brockington's line of questioning. It answered many of my own questions. Um, but Mister Rogers, I'm hoping you can explain to me how reserve funds are funded. How do we ensure that we have money going into those reserve accounts every year?
Uh, Mister Mayor, uh first, just call me Cyril, makes me feel younger. The reserves are basically for, from a transit perspective, we contribute from the operating fund. So basically. Consider, you know, the call all comes into the operating bucket and then we allocate funding into the capital reserve for for transit. And we obviously add some money to the operating reserve as well.
Okay, and in in your part of your explanation to Councillor Brockington, you said if we didn't have enough in the transit reserve, we'd have to go to other reserves. What other reserve account would we draw upon?
Uh, Mister Mayor, so we would go to our transit capital reserve first. Uh, then, of course, we would go through a stage approach in terms of financial risk mitigations, discretionary spending freeze, try and keep it contained within transit. If the overall transit portfolio can't fund deficits, we would have to borrow from other deficits, uh other reserves. And that when I say borrow, we would have to pay that back over time.
Okay, and then my last question, what is the targeted funding ratio for transit between property taxpayers and ratepayers?
Uh, Mister Mayor, the fiscal framework is fifty-five percent fares and forty-five percent tax.
And what is it in reality?
Uh, Mister Mayor, it's more sixty, forty, so so sixty from the tax and forty percent from the fair side.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Brown. Councillor Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for being on the speaker's list for the third time now for this topic. Um, there there seems to be a bit of a misconception that by throwing, just just throwing money at at public transit that we're going to improve the service. When there are a lot of other, that's partially true actually, but then there are also a lot of other factors that are affecting the current service reliability. I know that uh staffing has been a longstanding issue before, you know, before the LRT, before the introduction of the thirty-minute break. Um, by by the CLC. A lot of the labor issues that we had before were able to be covered by overtime. Um, staff might comment on this later on if if I'm wrong in any way, but a lot of these issues now are, we we just. The operators are just not there and by throwing more money at it, it's not going to speed up the hiring process, it's not going to. Uh, screen more people in, it's not going to speed up the training process because we want operators who are qualified. We want operators who know how to operate their vehicles safely. Um, as well as uh manage any issues that come up when they're on the road. So um I was wondering if staff can comment on kind of the staffing. Uh, picture right now, like how how many of our canceled trips are a result of no operators? And how far are we right now in filling those vacant uh operator positions?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Je parle en français alors, beaucoup beaucoup de choses.
Thank you so much for the question. Councillor Brockington mentioned it before. Let's get to the point. The OC Transpo objective is to reach a level of service of ninety fi- nine point five percent. When we have a storm or a meteorological event, it's impossible to get one hundred percent of our service. Sometime we cannot reach the ninety-nine point five percent amongst them. We know since last year. We have a shortage of bus operator. And with the opening of Ling B and D, we need more operators. We started a campaign last year, we were able to get some. We're gonna have a more aggressive campaign this year, but you have to be aware, this is a staff shortage everywhere in the world. Councillor Lowe, unfortunately. We have some abs- absent staff and we have to compose with that. This is everywhere, but I have to make sure that I've the na- number of bus operator per position. To compensate for the absentees. Be. Operators can take a day off because it will be working overtime at one point. So with the number of staff that I have, I will have less overtime to offer. Again, we had a storm yesterday, there was a lot of traffic. Even though we invested a lot to ensure the safety, what we're expecting for April. There will be, through our daily analysis, that is an issue and we have to tackle this issue. If I can have my operators reduce the number of absentees. I will be able able to compensate to those ad hoc events such as a storm. The objective once more is to reach a ninety-nine point five percent s- level of service. Once more. We have to make sure that everyone understands when we have very bad days, like we have a storm. And I mentioned in stem of the committee, we can cancel up to four hundred. Displacement, and this is over eight thousand displacement a day. So when you're co- we're looking at what are the issues, we understand this is not the ideal. Situation for our staff, but we're making some miracles at the operating operational center. We want to reduce the number of absentees because of overtime. And afterward. We will be able to tackle better the uh special storm and things like that.
Thanks very much for the uh for the answer. That was uh that was a lot of information there, but um. Are do you, do you have this number at all? Um, like how many of those trips canceled per day on a on a good day? Like not like weather not notwithstanding, like are are a result of a lack of um because of the vacancies that that we have in our operator pool?
Mister Mayor, it's very hard to answer to that question because first, a good day for me could be zero cancellations. Unfortunately, uh we will need to accept eight uh eighty uh cancellations during a weekday and uh. Ten, twelve cancellations during the weekend. During the weekend, we're performing very, very well. The challenge is during the weekday and um I would say. Probably fifty percent of my cancellations are related to uh uh people who will not uh. Were not there either because they don't show up or I don't have sufficient uh buzz drivers, as I said, but uh. It's it's very hard to fingerpoint one reason because it's a combination of factors. And uh TOCC is trying to do to do his best to uh to control that, so it's not very, very well identified. But we can come with the with the more information at Transit Commission if you if you would like to see that.
Okay, I'll ask you that on Friday, I think. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Lowe. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. What this discussion reinforces for me today is that there needs to be a municipal, provincial, federal agreement on operating costs. And I think COVID and what we've gone through with COVID is what we use as momentum going into that discussion. If we finish this calendar year at seventy-five percent of our pre-COVID ridership. How many more years is it gonna take for us just to get to a hundred percent, just to break even where we were? And we're gonna continue to rely on upper levels of government to help contribute with our deficit, so. This conversation needs to happen. We can't be going through this every year where we still don't know today, we're asked to approve this budget, whether or not we're gonna have. Forty million dollar deficit covered off or not. Last year, that was not met. Last year, we had to cover off part of that deficit, so we need to continue this discussion, but we need much greater stability. And certainty with our budgets uh going forward. If you want to have any discussion about frequency of service, augmenting frequency, reliability. It re- it does require resources. And so I'm really this year, as part of my role on the Transit Commission. Looking at those metrics. And uh we have to hold our own staff accountable because we're giving significant resources in this budget. And I'm expecting to see reliability covered off. So reliability, uh Mister Mayor, is a main concern that I still have with this budget. The ridership, the projected ridership numbers, I still believe are quite ambitious to go up another ten percent. Uh, from where we started off at this year and the upper level of government reliance to cover off our deficit. To me is still an unknown that's causing me great uncertainty with this operating budget in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brockington. Councillor Kits?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, a number of colleagues have now indicated they won't be supporting the budget. Um, and I think we're all acutely aware of the challenges, um reliability, availability, availability of routes, these are things that. You know, I'm battling in my community as well, and we know that OC Transpo is working to address these things. We've heard some encouraging things both today and at uh Transit Commission. But given that this is the first budget for a lot of councillors, um I'd like a comment, what happens if the budget doesn't pass? What happens if a majority votes no? What happens operationally?
And Councillor Kits, you mean specifically the transit portion of the budget?
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor, for the question. Um, what that would mean is we have no budget for transit. Uh, the next step in this process is to set the tax rates. Once we do have a finalized budget. Uh, that report will be coming to the Finance and Corporate Services Committee in April. We would be unable to set tax rates for the entire city and issue those bills. What that could eventually lead to uh is a cash flow issue because we'd be unable to actually issue uh some of those tax bills. So um setting or not not passing the transit portion could um implicate our cash flows in future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Kits. Um, I'm not seeing any other hands up, so I'm I'm gonna suggest we move through the motions. Uh, starting with the motion from Councillor Brockington, seconded by Councillor Gower, uh regarding uh extending uh. Uh, free transit to children aged eight to twelve. Um, is the motion carried?
Designed.
So we have one dissent from Councillor Hill?
A councillor, Daruz, too.
Councillor Daruz, you're dissenting as well?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Uh, the motion from Councillor King, seconded by Councillor Troster, um on the uh the route. Um, which again, I'll, you know, I'll point out, I think every every councillor has the opportunity to speak to OC Transpo about routes and there there's a review going on. No matter what, um but uh is the motion carried?
Sent.
Sent.
Designed.
Okay, uh, just put your hand up if you're dissenting then.
Councillor Dudas, Councillor Hill, Councillor Curry, Councillor Lowe, Councillor Kits and Councillor Daruz.
Anyone else? Okay.
Councillor Brown?
Councillor Brown? Okay, thank you, Councillor Brown. Okay, the, so now I guess we'll go to the amendment proposed by Councillor Leeper to the. Motion by Councillor Carr on the scaffolding. Um, is the amendment carried? Any dissent? Councillor Curry? Okay, Councillor Brown, are you dissenting as well?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Okay. And then the uh motion by Councillor Carr, the amended motion now by Councillor Carr, is the motion carried? Okay, and there's a few people are dissenting, Councillor Hill, Councillor Curry, Councillor Brown. Anyone else? Just on the motion by Councillor Carr. Yeah. Okay. All right, uh, so that's it for the motions. Let's move to the uh to. Item eleven A, the Transit Commission Draft Operating Budget. Uh, as amended. Um, do we want a recorded vote on this? Okay, uh, all right, go ahead, please.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Lulov?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Curry?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Councillor Divine?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
No.
Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor Lowe?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
No.
Councillor Darush?
We.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Troster?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
We.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Sorry, yes, it was the capital budget I wanted to to send on. I think we got the wrong.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
All right. Councillor Plant?
Absolument.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Mayor Setcliffe?
Yes.
Twenty-one yeas and four and eight?
Thank you. Uh, so moving to item eleven B, the Transit Commission Draft Capital Budget. Uh, as amended. Um. Do we need a recorded vote on that or is it carried? You're you're dissenting? Okay.
I'd like to dissent, Mister Mayor, Councillor Brown.
Councillor Brown is dissenting. Okay, yeas and eighths, all right, go ahead.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Lulov?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Curry?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
Yes.
Councillor Divine?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
No.
Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor Lowe?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
No.
Councillor Darush?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Troster?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Plant?
Weep.
Councillor Hubley? Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Setcliffe?
Yes.
Eighteen yeas, seven eighths.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item twelve, Transportation Committee portion of the draft operating capital budgets and um. We have a few motions here, uh beginning with Councillor Brockington. Councillor Brockington, uh so you you actually have two motions. One is on a crossing guard and the other is on the airport. Uh, you actually have three motions, crossing guard, airport parkway, and then there's actually a direction- Crossing guard, airport parkway, and then there's actually a direction regarding sidewalks.
Thank you, Mayor. I see on the screen that's the crossing guard one, so what's your preference? Do you want me to just read the whole thing or just the therefore clause?
It's up to you.
I'll summarize, just I'll go right in the middle. So colleagues, councils from both the last term and this term have approved the use from my office budget to supplement the cost of a crossing guard at a busy intersection in Carlington at La Perrier, Mariville, and Anna. This is due to the fact that it does not meet warrants. I want to be completely transparent with my colleagues. This does not yet meet warrants. Funding was provided by the MTO a few years ago. We allocated, this was the number one ask in the community location for a crossing guard. And because demand was so high when that funding was complete, I have supplemented that out of my office budget due to council resolution. As much as I like having the crossing guard there, Mr. Mayor, I would like the city to assume the cost, and that's why this motion is being presented today at council. So therefore be it resolved that the crossing guard at the La Perrier, Mariville, Anna intersection be staffed on a permanent basis as of March first, and all costs associated with the guard, approximately thirteen thousand per year, be assumed by the city and paid for from the automated speed enforcement revenue budget area. Thank you. And do you want me to go right into?
Yeah, you might as well present the other motion.
Thank you, Mayor. So at Transit, the Transportation Committee last week, there was a motion regarding the airport parkway, not waiting until all of the DCs have been collected in order to proceed with some of the components. And I think there's interest in looking at advancing some of those components in the short term until the transportation master plan is complete, as well as up to two years of revenue passenger service of the Trillium Line, which is right next door. And my community has been very engaged in this process, and there are still a number of issues outstanding with Walkley Road and the modifications to Walkley Road. And in speaking with Ms. Chi at the committee meeting, there was a commitment that staff would continue to work with the community and myself. I want to get this in writing because it's such a volatile file, Mr. Mayor, that this is the wording that helps me work with staff going forward. So therefore be resolved that staff continue engage with the local community and ward councillor on the final design process, specifically relating to the Walkley Road project, including solutions on mitigating negative traffic impacts as a result of the off-ramp from the airport parkway and the proposed modifications to Walkley Road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and we can come back to your direction after the other discussion. All right. Comments or questions on the motions and the Transportation Committee portion of the budget? Councillor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions for staff about the crossing guard motion. Are there any locations that are ahead of Mariville and Anna, I believe, in terms of the queue for a crossing guard?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, just a bit of context, in 2022, we we received and evaluated fifty-one requests for different locations. Ten of them actually meet warrants, and those tens are being funded from the 2023 budget. The remaining forty or forty-one did not meet warrants, therefore are not being funded. This one, when we did the assessment, ranked thirty-five out of the fifty. So at this point, when you take out the ten that are funded, there are still, give or take about twenty-five that are ahead of this one.
Thanks for bringing the information. So, yeah, this means that I won't be supporting this motion because this means that we will be, again, giving a specific location preferential treatment when there are twenty-five other locations that have, sorry, that have not met warrants and that have, you know, that probably have similar demands. I'm sure many of our, many of my colleagues around the table have locations around the city that they would love to see a crossing guard. And this goes for traffic management measures as well, like always stops, traffic lights, protective lefts, and all this stuff. And the motions, I don't think, are the best way to do this. I think we really should work with staff behind the scenes for this stuff. And when it comes to warrants like this, this is fairness on a citywide level, so I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Councillor Lowe. Councillor Plant. Sorry, it's not you. It's Councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I seconded this motion. I seconded this motion because I have similar experiences in my ward for unwarranted crossings involving children around schools. And I appreciate Councillor Lowe's position, and I certainly would suggest that we need to move in an evidence-based direction. But what I hope that this motion will open up is a further conversation about the investment in road safety that we make for our city. We do need evidence, but we need to ensure that we have various factors contributing to this evidence. And traffic engineering has come a long way. Warrants are still warrants, but there are other circumstantial applications that I think if we prioritize road safety as a council, we could layer into this conversation. And so I wanted to support Councillor Brockington in his efforts to try and bring visibility to this issue. I know that we have several signalized intersections or signals that have met warrants that we are currently not funding around sixty million dollars. So we have a chronic problem of underfunding road safety here, and so warrant or no warrant, I think this motion brings light to the fact that there are children involved. There are families who are looking for safety, and we're transitioning from, you know, a single mode to multi-modes in urban, outer urban wards, and we don't have solutions that currently meet our needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Councillor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For all the reasons that Councillor Johnson just said about safety and that children are involved and everything, is why I would share Councillor Lowe's concerns about the list of locations ahead of this that have been assessed ahead of this. And I'm wondering if staff can provide that list to councillors, and perhaps we can even release it publicly so that locations around the city know who we're jumping the queue on, and that they can figure out what they're going to do for their locations. I applaud Councillor Brockington's suggestion to use the revenues from the Photoradar. And perhaps if revenues continue to be as high as they have been from Photoradar, maybe we can fund all these locations. But I can't support jumping the queue without some information about how many locations and what those locations are that we're jumping ahead of. So can staff produce that and share that with the public and with council? Mr. Mayor, we can certainly share the list with members of council. We already share that information individually with the councillors that are affected whenever we do a warrant review for a crossing in our ward. So individual ward councillors would be aware of the ones that we've done a review, and either they've met or have not met the warrants. And I would just like to draw a bit of a distinction with the controlled intersection warrants, where, yes, there is a long list that's not funded. In the case of the crossing guards, once they meet the warrants, we make every effort to dedicate the resources to them. So this year, as I mentioned, there were ten that met the list, and those are the ten that you see in the budget for 2023. That's great, Alan, but what I'm trying to get at here is because that process up till now has worked, I think, for most councillors. But we're about to throw that out the window. We're going to now create our own list of who's going first. So I think it's important for residents to know who's getting bumped off that priority list so that we can go to a lower one. My hope here with that list is that we'll find a way to fund them all. Yeah, the, as I mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we can provide the list. Bit of context though, in terms of the warrants, so the warrants were actually approved by council back in 2019. The council or the warrants are actually based on the Ontario Traffic Council guides that have been developed. And those guides were developed basically with the input of municipalities across the across the province, of which the City of Ottawa participated in that effort. So what that provides is basically consistency in terms of how we deal with warrants across the province. And that's why at this point, we're not in a position to recommend any locations that do not meet the warrants, because at that point, I think we talked about evidence-based decision-making. There would be no evidence to be able to support why unwarranted locations would be permitted to move forward. And then it opens up the process to a lot more subjectivity in terms of decision-making. And I think most of the public, when we explain that process and how staff evaluated and that it's experts that do this evaluation for us, I know certainly with school councils and that, that I've dealt with, that were looking for crossing guards, they all supported the process, and we're happy that we had a process in place. But this motion is saying, let's put that process aside and start cherry picking from the list. So I'm going to ask you again, can we get the list of all the ones that were evaluated, but we didn't have the funding for, that fit in the same criteria as what Councillor Brockington's bringing to our attention, so that the residents of the city will know what they are, and perhaps we can get support around the table to fund them all? Mr. Mayor, as I indicated, we can provide that list. Okay, thank you. And so I'm wondering, I'll ask the mover if he'd be willing to defer this motion for two weeks until we get that list and have a discussion about, can we find the funding to fund the entire list?
Are you okay with that?
I'm going to speak next. Do you have anything else? And I'll address your question in one second.
Well, okay, I may want to speak after him then, since he can't answer the question now. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a few questions for staff, and then I'll answer Councillor Hubley's question. Has city council ever approved unwarranted stop sign installation?
Through motions of council, yes.
Yes, and how often does that have during any term of council? Rough number?
It very much varies.
So we've seen a number of staff, sorry, councillor reports come to Transportation Committee outlining concerns within communities, arguments are made, and the councillor pitches to the committee, and if approved, comes to council. And council has, I think, in every case, approved that request, local request. We rely on the local councillor to bring road safety concerns that warranted a stop sign, and we've approved them. So I'm also aware that the Ottawa Student Transportation Authority is going through a significant time right now recruiting bus drivers, school bus drivers, that they are heavily pushing families to adopt walking program or campaign, not just at a particular time of year, but that if the shortage of drivers persists, the number of routes that will be staffed will have to be reduced, and they'll have more kids walking. So we're not going to see fewer students walking over time. We're going to see more. And that puts more pressure on the city to provide school crossing guards. Chair, I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time because the funding is still there for this guard. The funding still will be coming out of my office. I don't think I'm any more special than any other intersections that have been assessed. But what I've tried to present today is this is a dangerous intersection. We had a death on the street two blocks away just last year, not of a student, but still pedestrian was killed. And this is a dangerous street. This is a dangerous street. And I do hope that as the automated speed enforcement campaign expands, and there's more revenues coming into the city, and they must be directed to road safety initiatives, we have a broader conversation about how to allocate these funds. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to withdraw this motion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brockington. Could you, let's move to your direction then, if you're ready to provide the direction that you have on sidewalks.
Thank you, yes. So speaking with staff over the last little while about sidewalks in general and the need for greater investment, this wording has been prepared, and the direction is the best way to go. So to staff, that council direct staff to report back through the capital closure process in Q2 of 2023 with a metric for the suggested number of sidewalk lane kilometers to be renewed each year. And in addition to the proposed one million dollar program in 2023 for sidewalk minor repairs, that an incremental two million dollars be allocated through the closure process as a one-time contribution to assist in advancing citywide sidewalk repairs. Staff also be directed to consider future allocations to the proposed minor sidewalk repairer program in subsequent budgets informed by the metric referenced above in order to maintain the city's sidewalk infrastructure in a state of good repair. And finally, that staff also be directed to consider starting the tendering process before the closure report to avoid potential delays due to the construction season beginning in April, and if required, allocate two million dollars of the incremental thirty allocated to the road resurfacing program, which will be replenished through the capital closure exercise. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so is that direction accepted? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move to voting on the motion on the on Walkley Road, on the airport parkway, et cetera. So is that carried? Okay, and then on item twelve A, Councillor Gower has an interest that has been declared. So on twelve A, is that carried? Okay, and then twelve B, the remaining Transportation Committee draft operating budget, is that carried? And twelve C, the draft capital budget as amended, is that carried?
Desent on twelve C two, please.
Designed also.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we capture that. Who, just put up your hand if you've dissented.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a dissent from Councillor Johnson, Kavanaugh, Dudas, Lulov, and Darus on the Transportation Committee capital budget, and Councillor Darush on item C two, which is the second resolution with respect to the airport parkway.
And Councillor Darus, the stand was Councillor Darush also on that one, please.
Correction, Councillor Dudas, Darus, and Lulov just on C two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody good on that? Everybody's vote has been recorded? Yeah, okay. Sorry, I could have split those into, but I think we captured everything. Okay. Thank you. Let's move to item thirteen, the Environment and Climate Change Committee portion of the 2023 draft operating and capital budgets. And I know Councillor Gower has declared an interest on thirteen A. Are there any, are there any questions or comments about the Environment and Climate Change Committee budget? Okay, so then is item thirteen A carried?
Mr. Mayor, it's Councillor Brown. I wish to dissent on thirteen B and C, please.
You wish to dissent on which item?
Thirteen B and thirteen C.
Okay. But A is carried. I hadn't, I hadn't, yeah, so A is already, A is carried. So now we'll move to item B. Councillor Brown has noted his dissent. Is that carried? Item C, again, Councillor Brown has noted his dissent. Is item C carried? Item D is the rate-supported operating budget. Is that carried? Item E, the rate-supported capital budget. Is that carried? Okay. Okay, item fourteen is the Finance and Corporate Services Committee portion of the 2023 draft operating and capital budgets. Are there any comments or questions on that? Is that carried? Okay, item fifteen is the service review framework as outlined in the 2023 draft operating and capital budgets report, and I know Councillor Menard has a motion on that. Councillor Menard?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thanks for, to city staff in the city manager's office, as well as your office for working collaboratively on this. I know there's support from your office and city staff on this piece. I'll read it out and then just briefly comment. Whereas the city strives to ensure value for money in its service delivery and operations, and whereas the service review process needs to be established, and whereas the intent of the service review program is to verify value for money and look at service delivery without a bias to shifting from in-house provision to external delivery, and whereas the governance report references greater transparency and tools to review the budget for both council and citizens, residents, and whereas quality and accessibility of services should be paramount as part of this review, and whereas the Auditor General routinely reviews various city branches and activities various city branches and activities, value for money and program effectiveness, and where staff should consult with the Auditor General to avoid reviews that the AG has identified in her work plan or has recently been undertaken. Therefore, be it resolved that the following amendments be made to Document Three of the 2023 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets Report Policy Statements and Principles of Service Review Framework. Principles four, the overall goal of the review program is to ensure the delivery of high-quality services to residents while ensuring value for money, not service level cuts. Six, environmental quality and/or public safety will not be compromised when considering the service delivery model. Human resource policy, city employees will be treated fairly, and the applicable collective agreement terms and conditions will be respected in any review and/or changes to service delivery options. One, in the instance of managed competition, including in-house bids and contracts with private sector agents, said contract should not be a barrier to becoming competitive or to providing quality services. Be it further resolved that the following amendments be made to Document Four, Service Review Framework. Step one, opportunity identification of the following criteria: cost to maintain long-term, long-term viability, ability to achieve economies of scope and scale across and within delivered services and long-term potential for savings. Step two, service delivery option analysis and high-level design. The paragraph one revised to read, the service delivery option for consideration include but are not limited to internal as-is, internal reengineering, managed competition, including in-house bids slash contracts and internalizing third-party service delivery, contracting out P3s. Paragraph two revised to read, public consultation will be undertaken where the findings of the analysis indicate either an adjustment to existing service levels or change in delivery model should be recommended for council consideration. The findings in this analysis, along with the next steps and public consultation input, will be brought forward to the appropriate standing committee for consideration where warranted. Step three, the change here is including the including in-house bids, contracts, internalizing third-party service delivery. And step four, implementation and validation, paragraph one revised to read, the stage involves implementing, managing, and monitoring the new or restructured service provider to ensure improvement targets and benefits are achieved. Right, that's a lot of words there, but the, the basic fundamental point of why we were looking at this is to, I guess, reflect you know, our comments publicly on this, to make sure that this is, shown that this is not to look for service level cuts, but rather deliver high-quality services to residents with value for money. And that we are reflecting that it's not just looking for any type of contracting out and and P3s, but rather also looking at in-house potential savings and bringing things in-house that could yield saves, which I know the city has done in the past and we would look for in the future. I think my colleagues have seen representatives of over 11,000 city employees recently sent a letter to members of council on Monday expressing the concerns about the proposed framework. I, I share in those concerns. I think that's why, Mayor, we've, we've worked to, and Councillor Divine, thank you for seconding this, to consult with your office and see them address through this, through this motion. So I think this better reflects the language. I, you know, I'm bringing it forward to clarify the evaluations, as well as make sure public consultation is included. We didn't, we didn't have that in the first instance. Public consultation is embedded in these documents now, which, which we'll need to do. And I, and I think, you know, I do want to make it clear as well, I'm going to support this amendment and I'll support the, the overall review. I, I do want to make it clear, just personally, I'm not afraid to admit I believe in, in public service. I think that our services are best delivered public in-house by public sector employees. And I don't believe that, you know, a profit motive, and I don't think that's what we're striving for here, should ever be included as part of a public service delivery model. I think the empirical record is, is clear on this. And that we've seen reports that have come out of late that have challenged the city's reliance on that, on that model. And so, you know, Mayor, I think this is a reasonable motion that brings us together to, to get to what we've said we want this to be, which is not about service level cuts, but high-quality services and, and value for money. So appreciate your support and, and staff support on this, and Councillor Divine for seconding. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. Councillor Currie?
Yeah, I just, my general comment on this is, a working group can actually recommend whatever it wants. It will be up to committees and the community to decide what they want to do with it. You know, so I just don't want people to falsely believe that if there's a great recommendation that would save the city millions of dollars, that the working group would say, oh, but this motion says that we couldn't bring it forward. I mean, what I would like to see is every, and every possible review done, we're going line by line, programs and services, all of them liaising with the Auditor General. So I guess I would just want to make sure people are not believing that this motion would stop us from looking at anything and bringing it forward for people to consider. The working group has no power or authority. It just is a working group doing work, and an idea can come forward, just as any day of the week, and an idea can come forward. And if all of city council or a committee says, oh, well, we don't like that, or it doesn't work with what we're, we're already trying to do, then that's, that's fair. But when a working group is doing work, I think it, it's going to do work to make sure that we don't leave any stone unturned. So I understand what's in this motion. I just wonder if it really prevents anybody, any day, never mind the working group, anybody, any day from coming forward with any motion. That's what city council's for and its committees are for, right? Somebody wanted to come through and say, oh, I want to replace everybody in this particular department with somebody else or some other company, then that motion could come forward, it could fail. You know, with just the mover, voting for it or something, but it is possible. That's the only thing. I just want to make sure that people aren't unclear. But I understand the spirit of this.
Thank you, Councillor Currie. Yeah, and I think we, Councillor Menard and I have spoken about that. Obviously, at any given time, an individual councillor or three councillors can sit down and come up with ideas about how they think the city should deliver services going forward and bring those to committee or council, and there's no way for them to be restricted from proposing a motion on something by some other motion that prevents that from happening, right? So I don't think, I don't think that's, I think this is more a reflection of the principles behind the service review, but it doesn't limit the, the working group, nor does it limit any councillor or group of councillors from bringing forward ideas going forward of any nature, which would then be at the discretion of council. And I think it's important to, to reiterate, the working group does not have the power to make changes to city services or the city budget. Any, any proposals the working group produces would have to come before full council in the end as part of the budget process or through committees. So thank you for that, Councillor Currie. Councillor Lowe?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to seek some clarification from the mover. In the first operative clause underneath human resource policy, the first point, in the instances of managed competition, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe it was my 6:30 AM brain not reading it very well, but do you mind breaking that apart a little for me and telling me what that means?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This was just to clarify that there is a broader section of potential value for money, quality of services that could have been included here, including in-house bids, and it wasn't just a contracting out sort of P3 approach, that there is a lot that we can look at in terms of internalizing city services that may have been contracted out previously, which I know we've done in the past. So in terms of the, the, this section was not changed much at all, but it just included the in-house bids piece, I believe, as part of that HR policy. So just, I guess, to Councillor Currie's comment, it expanded what we could, what we should be looking at overall.
So there's also, my, my assumption that would be, my interpretation, I should say, would be correct that if we end up finding a contract, it should not block us from providing our own services.
I think, I think the, the main goal here is that collective agreements are going to be respected, right? And that we have collective agreements, that, that's, we're going to respect those agreements. And if there's service level changes, those will be consulted on, and, and of course, you know, the, the language about becoming competitive or providing quality services was, was added, the providing quality service piece. That becoming competitive piece was in there previously.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Councillor Lowe. Councillor Divine?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, I, I support the motion, I'm a seconder on it. I appreciate that the motion has come forward. I appreciate that the mayor has, has worked with the mover of the motion to offer his support. And, you know, to address what, what has been asked about the motion. The, the, the goal of this motion is simply to deliver as, as good a, a return on the service review framework as we can get from it. There's no question that a service review should be a regular part of, of the business for government, and we need to know as, as residents and taxpayers, we need to know that the services and programs that we are offering and delivering to the people of the city are, are being done at best value. But in doing so, we do need to broaden our thinking, and we need to make sure that we're looking at the best delivery model for each program, whether it's fully pub, fully public, fully private, or something in between. And with that as a goal, with getting the best result of this framework, this service review framework as we can out of it, it does us no good, or it does us not as much good to focus only on the services we deliver in-house, but not turn our attention to those services that we currently deliver through private partnerships or through other means. And so basically, what this motion is seeking to get in place is that we can, this working group can look both ways before we cross the, the fiscal street. So that's why I'm supporting that. So we get the best process, the best results out of this process as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Divine. Any other comments on that? Is motion carried? Okay, and is the, is item 15, the Service Review Framework, as amended, is that carried? Okay, so we're moving now to part three, which is the delegation of authority, and there are a couple of motions here, beginning with a motion from Councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think I will jump to the therefore be it resolves. This is a, a motion that is requesting staff to explore the feasibility of multi-year budgeting and performance measures in time for our 2024 budget process. The actual implementation of that multi-year budgeting and, and performance measures would still be coming back to council, but this is a motion to staff to explore it. So therefore be it resolved that the Chief Financial Officer assess the benefits, costs, and other implications of including a multi-year forecast as part of the city's operating budget, and be it further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer assess the benefits, costs, and other implications of including performance measures in each department section of the city's operating budget. And be it further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer report to council on these assessments at such a date that would enable the implementation of a multi-year budget or multi-year forecast, as well as including council strategic priorities and associated performance measures into the 2024 budget, should council determine to proceed with them. So I would like to first thank the mayor and his staff for helping to draft this motion. Certainly, this relates very much to how we might articulate our vision for this term of council. So I very much appreciate the mayor's leadership on this. And I'd also like to thank Councillor King for being my thought partner on this, on this motion when we first started considering the 2023 budget. So as the motion mentions, several other Canadian cities have applied multi-year budgeting with great success, most notably Vancouver. Here in Ontario, it is London. And although, you know, cities certainly have a lot of variability in size and scope and responsibility and priority, it is, it is my opinion that if we were to consider adopting multi-year budgeting, we might be able to tell a different story. The, the, the mayor in his comments when he opened said the budget is not just a series of numbers, but it's about people. But it's also the way we tell our story about where we want to get to for the people of Ottawa. And by using a multi-year forecast, we would be able to offer predictability and some stability that a current annual budget cycle may not provide. It would help create transparency for the people of the city of Ottawa when they want to know that we're driving in the direction that is important to them. And it wouldn't preclude an annual budget cycle, of course not. But with the added performance measures implications, we might be able to take stock of how we've been driving towards particular goals year over year. And we might have a clearer understanding around this council table, what the trade-offs might be. Because we'll have already established those, those priorities as part of our term of council priorities. So this motion is just to explore it. It, it would, it, I mean, undoubtedly, it, it does change the way that we do work. It, it, it implies a different way of doing work for our staff, but it would also imply a different way of doing work for us as councillors, and, and certainly with the mayor. We would have to work together to determine strategic priorities that now are strategic objectives. We are trying to drive somewhere, and the multi-year budgeting will underpin those priorities year over year. But I believe, you know, given my experience, certainly brief as it is over the last three months, our ability to come together already across political differences or differences of opinion, I, I think that we could really engage in this strategic planning process in a, in a different way. It would require 25 people coming together and, and doing harder work upfront. But I think if we were to move into this multi-year framework, we might be able to move more nimbly later. There is an expression that sometimes to move fast, you need to move slow. So this kind of process introduces that idea. I'm also really attracted to the idea of just providing residents with more certainty and making more strategic use of this governing body's time in reviewing the budgets, while the administration's time is to prepare the budgets. So again, I, this motion does not implement any changes, but it begs for some curiosity about the tools and processes that are already at our disposal to create a policy innovation that would, I think, works, serve well to restore trust with the people of Ottawa and create the vision that we all espouse. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Councillor Currie?
Thank you very much. I, in principle, I support this motion. Most boards I sit on do multi-year budgeting and do rolling plans. But, you know, I, I do want to ask staff about how difficult it would be to do this, because this is what I understand. Every time I've asked any staff member here about something, some project, they talk to me in terms of this year, next year, the next year. It, it, to me, I've always felt that staff are multi-year planning. They have these larger plans that they're directed to follow. They, I don't think could actually do their work without knowing when the budget, what the budget would be next year, the next year, and the next year. So I guess I would just like staff to make a comment on whether this would be difficult at all, because it's something they pretty much already do, and it's just something that we don't do. I, I think that is actually what it is. It's not staff that are not doing multi-year planning and budgeting, it's just us.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so I guess I'll, I'll address it in a couple of ways, just to temper expectations. If you look at our budget book, 1,200-plus pages is probably the one of the most detailed budgets that I've seen. So if you expect to see that with a four-year view, I, I can't deliver on that. But what I can deliver on is exploring this option, because we do do four-year planning, we do 10-year planning, in some cases, we do 30-year planning. If you look at your official plan, you bring it down to your TNP, your IMPs, your AMPs, and I can stay here till six o'clock if you like. So we do do that. So I think there's an opportunity here to come back with something that's a little bit more robust as part of the package. But I can't commit to that detailed 1,200 pages for four years. I can commit to integrating some performance measures, and I can commit to a financial outlook, because we still need to come back and adopt that full-year budget. Because I don't think we want to move away from that detailed book on an annual basis. So that kind of addressed your question a little bit.
Yeah, it, it absolutely does. I just, I don't want anybody leaving here thinking that all of a sudden we've come up with a snoot bright idea that you've never thought of before. And I just don't think that's fair. So, but I, I agree that we, as a council, can start looking at things differently, and I think our strategic planning process that's about to start will really feed into this. Anyway, I'll be supporting this, of course. I just wanted to make sure that staff had that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Currie. Councillor Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm generally, generally supportive of this as well, just because it, it does give us a better view down the road of what we're doing. But to build on Councillor Currie's comments about, this is something that staff already do, this is something that we don't do just yet. If we were to adopt this approach, and I know this motion is just to explore, but if we were to ultimately adopt it, would this put us in any sort of situations where it would bind us to something, and we'd have to, like, reconsider certain items or anything?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no. I mean, as per municipal act, we're still required to come back and adopt the annual budget. So it will be, I'll call it a forecast versus a multi-year budget for, for technicality in terms of terminology, but we will still come back and refresh that budget. You just need to be open for some variances. If, if I were to provide you a 2024 forecast today, and we fast forward to November, there's going to be changes inevitably, right? So, you know, we need to temper the ins and outs and the questions in terms of what changed at that level, just to kind of, a forecast is a forecast. The annual budget will be more concrete each year as we come forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lowe. Councillor Johnson?
I just wanted to wrap up, I guess. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank Councillor Currie for that clarification. So by skipping some of the wherestas, I may have skipped some of the ways that we acknowledge that staff already has several long-range capital plans and fiscal frameworks that are, are in lots of different places, and so we might be able to bring some of those together. I, I'm, I'm grateful for the support around the table. I, I certainly don't suggest that this presumes that we don't have any other emergencies.
we don't have any other emergencies, although, God willing, let's hope we don't have anything too significant. But I I do appreciate the the energy around the table to to work collaboratively. And I think that by creating this type of forecast, we will be able to tell a story about where we go and measure how we get there, and I think that's a very powerful opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Any other comments? Is the motion carried? Next, we have a motion from councillor Brockington on on basically reviewing the budget process. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your support on this motion as well. Although it is recognized that the city's budget process has been developed and refined over a number of years based on past practice and experience, there's always value in reviewing those practices to see if there can be further improvement. And whereas there may be useful lessons learned from this year's process, especially for those members of council who have gone through the city's process for the first time, such as the desirability for budget documents to be more user-friendly, the identification of unfunded pressures, and the consideration to improving the budget public consultation process, initiating before the budget directions are set. And whereas it's expected that the process for the development of the 2024 draft operating capital budget will begin within a matter of months, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to conduct a budget survey for all members of council about the 2023 budget process and report back to council on the results as part of the 2024 budget directions report or earlier if possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Is the motion carried? Thank you. A motion from councillor King on a municipal price index. Councillor King?
Thank you, Your Worship. For municipalities and especially the city of Ottawa, knowing how inflation is impacting municipal expenditures is very important, especially in today's challenging economic environment. A municipal price index would paint a comprehensive picture of price changes that impact the range of city spending. It is an objective measure of municipal inflationary trends as it relies mainly on price movements measured in the marketplace for goods and services bought by the city of Ottawa. This differs from the Consumer Price Index, which measures the prices that a consumer faces when buying a basket of goods for a household. A tool such as the Municipal Price Index would help the city monitor whether increases in expenditures are rising at the same rate as increases in the prices for goods and services it purchases. The motion before you asks city staff to simply determine the feasibility of developing and applying this tool to future budgets. It is an important tool since it would complement any proposed multi-year budget framework. So the resolution is therefore be it resolved that council direct the city treasurer to prepare a report to determine the feasibility of developing a municipal price index for the city of Ottawa. I'd like to thank councillor Johnson for seconding this motion and would like to ask for colleagues' support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Is the motion carried? Thank you, everyone. All right, let's move on to item 16, which is the council approved the, that the chief financial officer be delegated the authority to adjust the accrual budget to include any budget changes approved by council as part of the final adopted budget, and to include the accrual budget presentation within the city of Ottawa's final adopted 2023 budget book for information purposes, as described in the report entitled Report on 2023 Budget Expenses Pursuant to Ontario Regulation 28409, approved by the Finance and Corporate Services Committee. Is the motion carried? Item 17, approve that the chief financial officer be delegated the authority to make the necessary adjustments to the 2023 draft operating budget and to make any necessary authority and debt financing adjustments to the 2023 draft capital budget to reflect the adopted budget and any approved amendments. Is that carried? Item 18, approve that the interim city manager or her delegate be authorized to make applications for any subsidies or grants on the city's behalf, and that the city clerk be delegated the authority to amend any bylaws and approve and execute any necessary agreements in order to implement the decisions of council. Is that carried? Okay, we are finished with the roadmap document. So we will move now to item 24 on the main agenda, which is a motion to rise and report. Councillor Dudas?
That the committee of whole rise and report to city council.
Is that carried? All right, we'll move now to item 25, which is motion to adopt reports, which is effectively the motion on the entire budget. Councillor Dudas?
Be it resolved that the recommendations set out in the 2023 draft operating and capital budget reports outlined below, including all amendments and resolutions approved by council and committee of the whole, be received and adopted as amended. I'm noting it's all on the screen. I'm happy to read it at length if you wish, but I can skip down to the further be resolved.
Please do.
Awesome. Be it further resolved that any dissents and declarations of interest recorded during the committee of whole session be deemed to be recorded in the council session.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. So again, just to be clear, any dissents that were recorded or registered in the committee of whole of the whole are deemed to be registered in the council session and do not have to be reflected again. So on the 2023 budget, is the motion carried? Okay. Item 26, notices of motion, conseiller plant. You have a notice of motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas primary health care is funded by the provincial government and is a responsibility of the provincial government, and whereas a recent report by Ottawa Public Health suggests that at least 100,000 to 150,000 Ottawa residents do not have access to primary care. And whereas the Canadian Federation of Independent Business, CFIB, recently reported that physicians in Canada are spending approximately 18.5 million hours for the equivalent of 55.6 million patient visits annually on unnecessary paperwork and administrative tasks each year. Whereas it is essential that all levels of government work cooperatively to find solutions to improve primary care access, and whereas city of Ottawa human resources policies may require medical notes or forms from employees, for example, fitness to return to work after viral illness, and whereas various other city of Ottawa departments require medical forms for access to various programs and services such as paratranspo, ODSP, and other social services. Whereas completing unnecessary or cumbersome work-related medical notes and forms has been identified as an area of inefficiency for private, primary care professionals. Therefore be it resolved that staff and all departments be directed to review processes that require a medical note or form and identify where requirements for medical notes or forms can be eliminated or simplified and report back to council as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, conseiller Blatch. Councillor Kavanaugh? You have a notice of motion?
Thank you. And I want to thank the the secondary councillor Kits, who is the chair of Ottawa Public Health. Whereas March 11, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 viral infection as a pandemic. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic has been unprecedented in its far-reaching impacts, including collective trauma on individuals, families, children, and vulnerable communities. Whereas the impacts of COVID-19 continue to be felt in an overtaxed and under-resourced healthcare system and a range of other public services that have still not fully recovered from the pandemic. And whereas the leadership and frontline workers at Ottawa Public Health, as well as as health and social service agencies across the city of Ottawa have worked tirelessly and effectively to guide the city of Ottawa through the COVID-19 pandemic and continue to monitor and respond to a vast range of pandemic-related impacts. Whereas in March 2021, Government of Canada has designated March 11, 2021 as a national day of observance to commemorate the people who have lost their lives and the significant impact we have all felt because of COVID-19. And whereas of February 27, 2023, over 51,000 Canadian families have lost a loved one. And whereas on February 27, 2023, 1,019 Ottawa residents have died as a result of COVID-19. This does not take into account the number who are impacted where family, where family died elsewhere nationally or internationally. Whereas every death from COVID-19 will leave several individuals and families bereaved. Therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council join the federal government in designating March 11, 2023 as a day of observance to commemorate the people who lost their lives and the significant impacts we have all felt because of COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. The next notice of motion is from councillor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's about wine, which I'm sure is enticing after a long meeting. And so whereas wineries in Ontario that are not part of the VQA and sell 100% Ontario wine directly to a licensee such as restaurants are subject to a markup and wine levy imposed by the LCBO, which is not applied to sales of VQA wineries to licensees. And whereas the direct delivery of 100% Ontario non-VQA wine to a licensee is an important part of the local agri-tourism wine industry, providing a cost-effective and efficient way for Ontario wineries to sell their products. And whereas the LCBO markup and wine levy imposed on the direct delivery of 100% Ontario non-VQA wine to a licensee creates unnecessary barriers and costs for non-VQA Ontario wineries. And whereas the LCBO markup and wine levy have created unintended consequences such as limiting development of local agri-tourism and rural diversification adversely impacting the sustainability sustainability of local artisan wineries and the development of rural economies. Whereas the LCBO markup and levy is having a negative impact on over 30 local non-VQA wineries in Ontario, including those in rural Ottawa areas such as Navin and Richmond. And whereas the elimination of the LCBO markup and wine levy on direct delivery of 100% Ontario non-VQA wine to a licensee would provide a level playing field for wineries producing 100% Ontario wine and support the growth of the rural artisan wine industry. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor on behalf of council write to Ontario's Minister of Finance, Minister of Red Tape Reduction, Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, and Minister of Tourism, Job Creation and Trades, supporting the elimination of the LCBO markup and wine levy on direct delivery of 100% Ontario non-VQA wine to a licensee. And be it further resolved that the mayor provide any updates to city council on any progress or responses received regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kits. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to councillor Johnson for seconding this motion. Whereas Ottawa has a significant and growing older adult population who are living with a range of social and health needs. And whereas women are disproportionately represented among older adults living in the community and needing support services to maintain their health, quality of life, and independence. Whereas the research demonstrates that the large majority of older adults, 80% plus, overwhelmingly express a preference for aging at home. And whereas community agents have further demonstrated that the costs of providing home-based services for older adults, such as transportation services, home-based personal and health supports, programs to combat isolation and food insecurity are cost-effective and lead to a significant reduction in the use of emergency services and delays in admission to long-term care settings. And whereas senior-serving agencies across Ottawa, including the Old Forge, are providing effective and preventative service for older adults aging at home and are only limited in their capacity to provide these services by financial restrictions. Whereas the naturally occurring retirement communities, which is called NORC, short model for supporting older adults to age at home, particularly the Oasis model, which has been operating in Kingston for over 10 years, has been proven successful in decreasing emergency room visits by 26%, hospital admissions by 40%, and have led to a 45% reduction in need for home care services for older adults living in an oasis facility. And whereas the NORC Oasis model saves significant taxpayer money by leveraging existing community resources and empowering older adults to create, drive, and deliver supports in a way that meets the unique needs of each building or neighborhood. And whereas Ottawa is currently hosting a two-year Oasis pilot project to demonstrate the efficacy and cost-effectiveness of the Oasis model in partnership with Queen's University, the Old Forge, the Council on Aging, and the residents in three Ambleside condos in Bay Ward. Whereas Oasis Pilot Project are also operating in Bellville, Hamilton, London, and are in the process of being launched by community groups in a host of other Ontario cities. And whereas several community groups and organizations in Ottawa are seeking funding to initiate Oasis-type programs in their communities, therefore be it resolved that the mayor write to the premier of Ontario and the minister of health and long-term care to request a significant allocation of sustained funding for community-based aging and place supports like the NORC Oasis model, which are proven to increase quality of life and self-determination, prevent unnecessary use of emergency services, delay the need for admission to long-term care, and save significant tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Final notice of motion is from councillor Troster.
Hi, this is to close the road for the Fire and Ice Festival on Bank Street, so I'm just going to read the be it resolved. Therefore be it resolved that council approve the road closure for Bank Street from Slater to Somerset West. The road closure will begin at 1 PM on Friday, March 17, 2023, and end at 5 AM on Monday, March 20, 2023, for the Fire and Ice Winter Festival, providing it meets the requirements, conditions, and approval of special events advisory team. It's going to be a good time. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Item number 27 is the confirmation bylaw. Councillor Dudas?
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of March 1, 2023.
Is the motion carried? Any inquiries? All right, motion to adjourn, councillor Dudas?
Favorite one of the day, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of March 1, 2023 be adjourned.
Is the motion carried? Good job, everyone. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.